All right, good evening, everyone. I hope everybody had a good Thanksgiving holiday. Everyone call the meeting to order. Next up, we'd like to stand and do our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just want to remind any visitors to please sign in if you'd like. So first thing on the agenda is facilities and construction. Our Estle County Safety and ADA Upgrades, our view of bid results.
We have Peter with us, and he has good news for us.
Good deal.
Yeah, so we didn't have a lot of theirs on this project, but we did have one that came in really good. Our budget for the project was set at about $317,000 construction costs. And the bid came in at $252,000, which is really good. A good bid for the district. We certainly know that the contractor that submitted the bid, Jarboe Construction, has been working at the middle school and also at South Urban. And they've been doing what I feel like is a really good job to the district. They're pleased to get the bid from them, and we would recommend awarding them the contract for this work. Be happy to answer any questions.
I don't like to look a gift horse in the mouth, Peter, but just wondering why that's so under budget, I guess.
Well, I think one thing is, is that remember that when we sold bonds, we sold bonds in conjunction with Estle Springs. So this project was lagging behind. So we added a percent to the construction costs upfront to make sure that we bonded enough money to complete the project. So that was one of the things. And then, of course, this is a hardware thing. So in terms of locks and hardware, so the biggest issue will be probably supply chain if there is an issue. So it's not something that's been impacted a lot. And in all honesty, we was originally, as you can see by the document up there, it was $272,000. Well, John with Jarboe called today and said they were looking back through their work, and they figured out that we had been charged twice for some of the things, which was a $20,000 charge. It was something about the electronic lock.
The access controls were picked up by...
The access controls was bid by two different vendors, the electrician and a supplier.
Yes.
So it was $20,000 reduction in that. So thus, it came in at 252. So it's a good project. It's the same hardware that we've got at all of our other buildings, which, of course, when this is done, Todd Reese will have one key instead of the ring that he carries around. So it's a really, I think it's going to be good for the safety. Plus, it's your, all your secure entrances, all your electronic access. Anybody enters the building, you're going to know who it is. You're going to know what time they entered. There'll be very few keys. Principals will have a key. AD will have a key. Maintenance will have a key. Custodians have a key. Nobody else has a key. And everybody else has electronic access through their badge, so we track who comes in.
That's pretty impressive. I guess that's why we, we use Jarboe. They're honest and done a good job for us, so.
They've done a good job. They really have.
Everything that they've done for us has been on top notch.
Yes, it really has, and they've been on top of everything. And I mean, listen, they're very upfront. And this isn't the first time they've saved us money. They saved us a ton of money on the middle school project as well, which we don't care to pay for good work. We just want to pay for good work, and we don't pay no more. And when you've got good people like that, you're fortunate. So my recommendation then, A point two is to award a contract for construction. I would make the recommendation that we award a contract to Jarboe Construction in the amount of $252,000.
All righty, let's move it on down there. Consideration and approval of the revised BG one. I need a motion.
No, we'll need a vote on the contract first.
Oh, I'm sorry, vote on the contract, I'm sorry. So we'll need a, do you need to make a motion, right?
Motion.
Okay, so I need a motion. Sheila Samples makes a motion. Tammy Hardy makes a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Four oh vote. Motion carries. Now, consideration and approval of the revised BG one.
And Jeremy, if you'll pull that up there for us.
Love seeing IT guys struggle.
It will not load on my computer either, for some reason.
It was acting up a little bit today, so.
Well, with that being said, I mean, if y'all, I mean, I don't know if you had trouble at home or not, but the total construction cost for this project is $252,000. And along with all of your fees that go along with it, total project cost is $382,000. As you can see, it was, it was paid for through the local bond sale for $382,000. The additional funds that was in the amount now, there was almost $70,000, has been moved to contingency. And so there's $87,000 sitting in contingency. I do know right now that we do have one door frame in the back that will need to be replaced, that Peter and them is working on getting a cost. There's no need to put new hardware on the door, or a new door with the old frame, and it not work properly. So we're going to have somewhere in the neighborhood of a little bit over $80,000 in contingency for that project. Since this is a district-wide safety project, we've really discussed the fact that we were going to have to upgrade the intercom systems in these buildings to put them all equal. Estle Springs and ATC has brand-new intercom systems. So this will allow us, as long as everything goes well with construction, we don't anticipate any problems on this in terms of change orders or anything, because it's pretty much a straightforward job. You've got a lock on the door, you've got to replace the core, maybe deal with some hardware issues. But other than that, those things have been accounted for. This will give us enough money that we can upgrade the intercom systems at the middle school, at South Urban, and also at West Urban, which means that the only one left will be the high school, and we'll upgrade it starting in June, because there's a little bit more work to do with it. But then, the, all your intercom systems will be up and in work in order too. So the extra money will come in handy. That keeps you from spending general fund money to do that.
Why do they have the clocks in the schools?
Clocks are always a funny thing, because about as soon as you put a new clock system in a building, they're obsolete and outdated. And if we updated the clocks in the buildings, give it about three years, they're outdated and obsolete again. So the best thing to do if you're going to have clocks is buy you a good old-fashioned clock and stick your battery in it, put it on the wall, because you know it's going to work, if they can read a clock. You know, we'll have to do, we'll have to do a better job teaching how to read a clock, unless it's digital, you know? When you get digital, they'll understand that. Ain't it amazing what technology has brought us?
When the guy was walking around the new tech looking at the high school, that's one question that I asked. Matter of fact, Wentz's clock system, the day that it was deployed, so I asked him, I said, "Are these fixable?" He said, "Yes, I believe that all." You know, it's, you know, which is less of a cost if you don't have to replace them. But at some point in time, you do get into a part that you need to replace the clock. So, you know, I don't worry about that issue either, but maybe next year or year after, we could go and replace it. Yeah, you talk, you probably have several hundred thousand.
Well, I'm sure.
$10 a pop at Amazon for a clock that goes on the wall. Okay, right there. Yeah, a lot cheaper. But that is our BG one, and it was a godsend. A project come in under bid, come in under projected call, so it will allow you to upgrade those intercom systems as well. So we need a motion and a second to approve the BG one.
All righty, we have a motion to approve the BG one. Tammy Hardy makes a motion. Do I have a second? Carrie Smallwood makes a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Four oh vote. All right. Next is Estle Spring Phase Two renovation. And Peter has the update for that, I guess.
I can give you a brief one. Construction is underway at Estle Springs. Codell has been busy out there with the usual crew of contractors. Been doing a lot of earthwork and utility line installation outside. Hopefully soon, we'll see a building on the end of the existing building rise up. We have been very busy at our office reviewing shop drawings. I think one thing that this pandemic has really done has made the material acquisition just really jump. And so we've been trying to get those shop drawings turned around as quickly as we can in order to make sure that contractors can get the materials on order as early as possible for that project. So I'll be happy to answer any questions that you all have about that one, but that's where, that's where we are. Sort of looking to work through the winter, still have our fingers crossed for finishing up around June.
I believe Peter is correct. Utilities are done, connected, reconnected, water.
In the ground, some of them, I believe, are. I wasn't sure that I'd heard that all of them were.
I think electrics connected, reconnected, sewer and water is reconnected. Not sure about gas.
Right.
I don't know if the gas connection's been made, but I think they were digging footers today.
That's good.
So footers should go in here in the next few days.
I was going to ask if it'd be a slab or a footer. I wouldn't sure how that...
It'll be footings. It'll be slab on grade, but there'll be the stem walls. That is what they'll be starting with, so.
Good deal.
It's going well.
All righty. Next up is consideration and approval of the revised BG one.
And this is the result, and correct me, Peter, if I'm wrong. This is the result now that you have the BG one for, or the contract awarded for the district safety upgrades, because these bonds were sold together. It tied both of these together. So it changed the bond fees, and it changed some of the bond discount fees and other items in there. So now this contract here will be brought up to date, and that allows us to move forward now with it. So there's very few minor changes. The total cost of construction did not change. It was all the fees that was associated with this. So we just need to get this on record. Peter and them will even input this one. Once we get the original BG one in, they take care of it there at Ross Tarrant, and we'll be getting Rebecca, be sending signed copies to them. So we just need a motion and a second to approve that, and we've got all of our BG work in order.
I have a motion to, for the revised BG one. Sheila Samples make a motion. Do I have a second? Tammy Hardy makes a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Four oh vote.
Peter, real quick, timeline, start on the locks and safety.
So I think, I think we had them getting started in January. That's certainly the hope. It always takes a little bit of time getting all the contracts together with the direct purchase orders and getting those out. But I think, and then we hit the holidays. But I'm pretty sure that early January was the start.
Yeah, somewhere.
And I think somewhere around early April is finishing up.
And we'll be working on the phasing plan at the middle schools. South Urban won't be quite as difficult. They'll have a couple of Fridays that they're, they do not have students. So their plan is to jump over on a Friday and work when students aren't in the building. And we're working with Ms. Napier and Ms. Tucker for a phasing plan at the high, at the middle school. Just give them a wing at a time. They'll take a wing and may, and get through. They may drop back to the office, but we'll work on a phasing plan. It really helped reduce the cost, because if they don't have to work nights, it reduces the cost.
All righty.
Anything else you want to tell us, Peter?
I'm in good shape, Jeff, thank you very much.
How much turkey did you eat?
I ate a lot.
Thanks, Peter, appreciate you.
Probably bring the principals right up here and put them on the hot seat, so. Bring it up here. I don't know if it's hot seated. We'll bring up the principal, and then we'll bring up the assistant.
Thanks, Peter. See you, bud. Be careful.
Bye, Peter.
Peter, thank you.
Thank you.
Safe travels going home.
Okay, next up is our Spring 2022 Assessment Results and Next Steps. So we've allotted 15 minutes per school, starting with South Urban.
So this is preschool data, which kind of looks different. You just need one. Let's run it back.
I'll get one, I'll get another one for Donna here.
So the state requires
Thank you.
an assessment for preschool three times a year. I did not bring the TSG data, because mostly that is anecdotal notes, so it's not easy to show growth or performance with that, because it's anecdotal notes of the children. So what we, what I did get ready for here. So this is our data from last year. And maybe you don't know this, but we have pretty much three grade levels at South Urban. We have the kids that turn two, they're two on August 1st. We have kids that are three on August 1st. And we have kids that are four on August 1st. So last year, those kids were separated into two rooms. The four-year-olds were in rooms, and then the twos and threes were in a room. So this data that you're looking at now, that's how the classrooms were set up at that time. And at the top of the sheet, from here to here, that's our two and threes. And then the bottom, under that middle gold band, that's our four-year-old data. So we do two other assessments besides the ones the state requires. And the one in the youth, the little squares in the pink, those are our kindergarten readiness assessments. And we have locked those after the kindergarten screener that the kids have to do in kindergarten. We don't have that data back yet. But you can see, we have two different ones. One for preschool ready and one for kindergarten ready. So at the beginning of the year last year, in the top pink, we had seven out of 49 kids that were preschool ready in the fall. Okay, so that was 14%. You can skip the winter. The winter, we had 74%, 35 out of 47. We gained a few kids, because that's something else that we do all year long, is gain kids, because if they qualify for preschool, we do take them. So then, we stayed at 74% for preschool readiness at the end of the year. Then you can look down at kindergarten readiness in the next small pink box. And that is our fall. We had 13% of our kids that were ready, according to that assessment, at the beginning of the year for kindergarten. And you can see in the winter, we went to 67. And at the end of the year, we had 72 out of 80 children ready for kindergarten on that assessment. And that was 90% of our kids. Now, the other boxes on there, that is an assessment called ESGI. And ESGI is something that we pay for, and we do it every other month in preschool. So we have our, we didn't start with uppercase letter recognition and lowercase letter recognition with our youngest children, our twos and threes. We didn't start with that in September. We started in November. And so you can look, if you wanted to just look from November to May, you can see that the number of kids that recognized 20 to 26 uppercase letters jumped from 11% to 22%. But that's not actually a skill that we expect from, we work on it, but it's not something that's really appropriate for our twos and three-year-olds, our four-year-olds. It is, so you can look down there and see the uppercase letter recognition went from 17% in September to May 76%. Sounds of letters, that means that they look at a letter and say the sound that it makes. At the beginning of the year, we were 9%, and at the end of the year, 66%. And then the next row is, we grouped that all together as math. Even though it's colors, it just fits into math. So we start with number recognition, zero to 10 numbers. So that's 11 numbers. You can see how many kids knew those 11 numbers by May. And rope counting, counting in order. If they stop anywhere when they count from 23 to 30, we had 89% of those at the end of the year that could do that. And colors, recognizing up to 11 colors, nine to 11, we had 98% of our kids that could do that. And eight to nine shapes, 94% of our kids could do that in May. So you can also look at this and appreciate our preschool teachers, because these are not assessments that you give a kid and they do it on paper. Every child is sat down with every other month to assess these children, one-on-one. And then these are our C-Step goals from last year at the bottom. We wanted to increase the number of childrens that could make the sound of 14 letters, at least 14 letters, from 73% to 78%. And we did meet that goal. We were at 81%, but we just measured our four-year-old children, not our twos and threes. And then the next goal, it was a math goal, and we did not meet that goal. And it was percentage of four-year-old students could recognize a minimum of 11 numbers. We wanted to increase that from 73 to 78%, and we actually decreased that to 66%. On the back of this, you can see where we're starting at this year. I don't have November on there yet, because it's not due until November 30th for our teachers. So I didn't want to ask them for that earlier. So we'll add to this throughout the year, and our new goals are there at the bottom. Our C-Step objective is that our four-year-old children would be able to make the sound of at least 14 letters. And 81% of our children, we want to be able to do that. And for math, we want 70% of them to recognize 11 numbers, zero to 11, so. I'll tell you some of the things that we're doing, and why I think that there are such, there's such a difference in our reading and our math. We do seem to be literacy-based there. We're very literacy-focused at South Urban. So we are working on focusing on math. there, we're very literacy-focused at South Urban, so we are working on, focusing on math as well. I'll show you something that we bought. We started using something called learning dynamics with our kids, we started that last year, and it is for letters and sounds, so these are posted, these are school-made, we bought the kit and then we've made these, they're posted all throughout the school, and it is, each letter has a story to go with it, so this is, does the dancing dinosaur, I think, so there's a story that goes with it, a song, and the kids see this throughout the school all the time, and I think that's why that our letter recognition has been up. And then, so when we looked at this data and saw that we did not meet our math goal, we started posting these throughout the school. So we're working on letter recognition, and they'll see the number, and they also see the quantity down here and the word. But then each week we have a number, a color, and a shape. So this shape, this week is 12, the shape is triangle, the color's red, and the number's black. So you can hear all throughout the school during the day, they reference these posters, the teachers and the students. We do PLCs, there's a lot about preschool that's very different, but PLCs are not different, we still have state standards just like every other grade. We focus on continuous improvement, so we look at the kids' data, and we change our curriculum map and our instruction as we need to. We are going to implement peer adult observations, it's hard to get a preschool teacher out of the classroom because they do have to stay, we have to have two teachers in there all the time, but we need to get our teachers out into other teachers' classrooms to observe. And then I wanted to bring up, Ms. Adams, I brought her with me, she is our guidance counselor, and we're so fortunate to have her. Last year was the first year that preschool had ever had a guidance counselor. So a lot of what the kids are learning at this age is behavior and how to express their emotions appropriately, it's the first time that several of them have been in a public setting. So Ms. Adams is going to let you know a little bit about what her focus is, and we try really hard to protect her time to only be about working with children.
So, one of the most important things that we do at the preschool in conjunction with our counseling program is to collect behavior data, because we want everything that we do to be addressing our students' needs. And so the way that we do that is we track that through daily communication calendars that go home with every child, and the teacher will give information about how that student's day was, so they may receive information about how they'd done something very well, and they might receive a smiley face, or they may receive information about how our students might not have followed our expectations throughout the building. And those are be kind, be responsible, be safe, and those would be listed on that behavior calendar. So we use those to create these graphs that you see at the very bottom corner, and it helps us to figure out the behaviors that we're seeing in our building, and it gives us a percentage so we can see maybe what our main focus needs to be. And we use that behavior data to create our groups that we meet with, with our students, which in the middle of the screen is some of the examples of groups that I, that I have. One of them is an anger management group, we do cooperation, we do anxiety groups, just whatever our need is, we address those through the data that we collect. All of the students are participating in a school-wide, a social-emotional learning program, they receive that in guidance with me each week, and that program is Second Step, and it covers a range of topics between managing our emotions, recognizing our emotions, how to make friends, social skills. So they're getting that once a week with me, they also receive social-emotional learning in their classrooms as well with their classroom teacher, they use the program behind the little red door. So they're seeing it in multiple settings, and they're all around focused on the same topics. When we were implementing PBIS, when I first started at South Urban, we were doing the tiered fidelity inventory, and so we were trying to make sure that our expectations were in place, and we were trying to make sure that our students were, our teachers were equipped with the tools that they needed to help our students be successful, we realized that we needed to provide our teachers with something that would help our students self-regulate. And so we created calming cards that every teacher in the building has, so anytime a student may be struggling with whatever it may be that day, they have some, a tool that they can grab a hold of, that they can use to help our students to overcome the feelings and emotions that they're dealing with that day. And just a few of the examples are on the board, we tried to address that in our breathing techniques, we tried to do that through physical exercise, we tried to do that through artistic ways, we do that through sensory ways, we just tried to think about what would reach every child at any moment. And then right below that, you'll see our problem-solution cards that we have implemented from the pyramid model, and it is to teach our students what to do whenever a problem occurs, and it helps them to be more self-sufficient in having those strategies that they can use without any other assistance. And these are some of the things that we've been implementing at South Urban.
Any questions about preschool or our data?
I think it's excellent, and I'd love to see the 12 Days of Christmas included into your county. That'd be your musical century.
Everything has to be pictures and auditory.
Well, you could sing the birds and all the different characters that God with each day creates, and you'd have the music to go along with it.
I think you all can see the value of having a counselor at South Urban. We've been blessed to have our ESER funds that supplies those positions, and if you look at the funded positions that we have through ESER, that funding lasts through next school year. But if you look at the counselors, the social worker, two of our nurses are paid for through ESER funds, along with our safety director, there's about six or seven positions, there's some additional custodian positions that are paid for through ESER as well. So I know one of the big pushes, if you get an opportunity, if you're asked by legislators or whatever, is there's supposed to be a focus on school safety, and part of school safety is the counseling, it's not only the socio-emotional, but also just health in general. They're supposed to be, they're supposed to reopen the budget, there's supposed to be funding there. But if you imagine, if you don't have a school counselor that's doing this work, it's fallen to the classroom teacher to try to do that work as well. So I mean, it's, it's not a good situation, I know before, we did the best we could, our counselor from Estle Springs went over maybe once a week and spent a little bit of time there, which not only hurt Estle Springs, but it didn't do enough to help South Urban, to be honest. So just know that those ESER-funded positions, hopefully, there'll be some additional funding that will be coming down the pike, hopefully as early as this coming term. If not, I think you're going to have to really fight for additional money in that area, because I really don't think, I can't see where we can not try to find a way to keep a counselor in that school. You've also got your college and career readiness counselor at the high school that works through the ATC in college and career readiness, and that's proved also to be valuable, and it allows our two guidance counselors there at the high school to work on the socio-emotional state of our students there at the high school. There's needs across the district in that area, and those are very important needs. Our social worker, the families that we're going out and we're visiting, because what we've found is that time after time after time again, we call social services, we call DCBS, and time and time again, we're told this doesn't meet criteria, this doesn't meet criteria, this doesn't meet criteria. And when that happens now, we just don't sit back and say, well, we tried, we've got our own social worker we send out, and we try to meet the need. Not being critical, I know they've got a hard job, but you know, we have to pick up the slack, if they're not going to meet the needs, then we're going to have to meet the needs. So I really appreciate the information on the counseling program. Thank you. Are you going to yield the remaining balance of your time to Estle Springs? Thank you all. Ms. Mullins and Brooke?
Ms. Mullins and Brooke, next clip.
You going to stand by her for emotional support? Uh, she needs you. I'll guarantee she would tell us all that she needs you. It takes a, it takes a good team working together to make things happen.
Normally I would say I didn't need the microphone, but I finally took my month-old cold to the doctor yesterday and found out I had pneumonia, so I'm going to use the microphone tonight. I want to start by saying I appreciate the opportunity to come to you and talk about Estle Springs. I could talk about Estle Springs all day. I want to also say that in a lot of ways, Brooke and I have talked about this, this last couple of months, as we've been looking at our 30, 16, 90, and our CSEP and things like that, and this is my 10th year as principal at Estle Springs, but this is my first year to have third, fourth, and fifth grade, so in a lot of ways, this is a brand-new year for me. Every year is a brand-new year, but I have a brand-new lens this year, so it's, it's kind of new for me to be preparing data for you like this. One thing that I wanted to share is that in looking at where we're at, and in looking at our data profile, we are using the Kentucky Summit of Assessment data from our students last year, and I've included that in the pie charts, and then I also have a snapshot there of our fall map data. Now, in looking at that, I could never begin to fill one page with all of our data sources. All of our data is used to inform instruction, whether it's summative or whether it's formative, whether it's a benchmark assessment, end-of-the-year assessment, whatever it is, it's all used to inform instruction. So this is just a snapshot of that overall data, because I know part of what we're addressing tonight are the trends that we see. I can tell you overall that the trends that we see tell us that we have too many novice students. And one thing that is very encouraging, and I had a great discussion with Mr. Norton, with our leadership team, we have took the Kentucky Summit of Assessment data and looked at the CUSP scores to identify how many CUSP kids we have, which are within a four-to-six-point range of moving from novice to apprentice or from apprentice to proficient. And you're talking six to eight kids in each novice and apprentice. You look at moving eight kids from novice to apprentice, and you've reduced your novice by 10%. So it's been really exciting to look at what we've got to work with. We have, and the big thing I want to take away from this tonight is that I can give you an overall data profile, but what I can really tell you is that the rich discussions come when we talk about those students. You know, when you give them names, Isaac Mullins, Garrett Mays, William Mullins, when you put the names to those students and where their scoring, it changes, it changes the agenda, it changes the narrative. So what I really want to focus on tonight is, let's take the data that we have, but I want to talk to you about our process for that gap closure and novice reduction and some good things that we have going on. Our biggest areas of concern, yes, we've looked at fourth and fifth, yes, we know what their assessments last year told us about the data, but we're really honing in some extra time in second and third grade, because those would have been your students who suffered from the lack of primary foundational skills, and we have been taking some big steps to address them a little bit differently, and so I wanted to talk about that a little bit differently. We have two par educators that we're using specifically in second grade for the majority of their day. They pull students from K to 5, but they pull a lot of second-grade students because those second graders really missed that foundation, and it's very evident, even if you look at their map data, they're very overloaded in our novice performing students. In third grade, we have a, we had a unique possibility this year, and it was something we discussed with our leadership team to seek their support in this, but we have been able to reduce our third-grade classroom sizes. You know, when you get your allocation in the spring, and then you get your list of students, as a leadership team, you're, you're kind of charged with where you need to put those people, and how many students will be in each class, and we made the decision to make our third grade the smallest class sizes. And when I say small, I mean between 18 to 20 a class. It, it, you might not think that makes a huge difference between 18 and 20 to 24, 25, but it makes a huge difference for those classroom teachers. So I did want to, I didn't list that on here tonight, but I did want to share with you just some targeted ways that we're looking at second and third. As we scroll down and look at what we've got going on overall in the school, we have our school-wide MTSS block every day, and this is different for every grade level except for kindergarten and fifth. Kindergarten and fifth have it at the same time, but it works out fine for them, and what we do during these blocks is we push every interventionist and enrichment teacher into that block and really break down those group sizes so that we can focus on skills that we need to look at, and it's by each grade level. So it's not that we're saying for this week, everybody's working on math, or everybody's working on reading, or they pick the skill based on their classroom assessments that they need to work on. We have an amazing intervention staff, Brooke leads up our intervention program and does a phenomenal job at that. I could never fit the amount of knowledge that she brings from an intervention standpoint into this room or onto this paper, but her experience as a second-grade teacher and as a reading recovery specialist, and anybody that knows what goes into reading recovery knows what type of specialty degree or certification that is. So Brooke does an amazing job with, from everything, from identifying to the paperwork to the next steps, whether that is, you know, intervention should be a revolving door, students should be moving in and out of that, and that's a lot of paperwork to back that up, but she does a wonderful job, and a lot of intervention too, is that communication piece with parents, and that's something that she is, is very wonderful at. We have our grade level and our content-focused PLCs that we've been able to really use, especially in looking at our new curriculum, knowing where we're at, looking at our pacing guides, you know, we were blessed, and I do say blessed, but with a unique situation this summer in adding a new math and reading curriculum. It's enough to add one in a year, but when you add two, that, that's a good problem is what we're calling it, but nonetheless, you have to stay on top of it. So our PLCs this year, and those conversations, which I will say Jolynn, Tanya Miller, April, Charlotte, they've all done a wonderful job navigating that for our schools, and it's been very good conversation. We have over 70 students in tutoring on Tuesdays and Thursdays. You can look at tutoring different ways. We started after-school tutoring last year, and I initially wasn't a fan, and I'll tell you why, is because by the time you get them in there, get them fed a snack, get them to a room, it's time to go home. But that comes, we had to look at it as, as the adults, what can we control in that? And in doing so, the tutoring staff have made that a very rich time. We have wonderful parent support for our tutoring blocks, and we do see improvements, we're focusing on our, they're not all Tier 3 students, but that was our first group that we targeted, and then we've been able to bring some more in after that as we've been able to look at our staffing. We do have very intensive targeted intervention going on for those novice students, and as I mentioned previously, And as I mentioned previously, just the high-quality resources that we've put in the hands of these teachers is making a difference. It is so interesting to go in a primary classroom and hear them talking about Egyptian culture, to hear them talking about, they're really, I love the breadth that it's bringing to those classrooms. On the back, I've just kind of talked about what else can we do, where else are we going with this? So this, a lot of this comes down to me to some of the most important components of the school day, which is identifying barriers for our students. It is helping them, helping figure out what is keeping them from reaching success and showing that growth. We're working closely with our Family Resource Center to see what barriers to their success are they experiencing, what needs might that family have that we can meet. We're working really closely with our attendants. There is not a second grader, no, I'm not gonna say there's not, there's not many kids who wouldn't get up and go to school. They just need the adult to get up to come to school. I mean, because Jessica Isaac loves you, but he's tough in the mornings, so. But a lot of times, it does come down to the adult. And for our students, especially at the elementary level, if you look at a truant child, you have to look at building positive relationships with that family to help them to understand when your child isn't at school, there's no amount of work we can send home to make up for that classroom instruction. So we're really trying to focus in on our attendance, and Mr. Norton has done a phenomenal job tied with our counselor and our Family Resource Center to really build some positive relationships. So Donald, thank you for that. We are looking at the emotional and behavioral support for these students. We have a school-wide social and emotional learning block. We're using a curriculum called Harmony, not eHarmony. It's called Harmony. We had a lot of teachers who were kind of wigged out about wanting to put their kids on eHarmony. But we can really look at what emotional and behavioral needs that these students have, keeping them from growth and success in the classroom. And behind every inappropriate behavior is generally a trauma or an emotional barrier that a child just can't get through or can't get over. And so rather than tackling that with a discipline side, we always tackle first with that emotional and behavioral support side. And so Siobhan has done a phenomenal job identifying those students, once again, building those relationships, naming those students, not just looking at that overall PBIAS data, but looking very intently at where these kids are and what their needs are, which really kind of leads to another important point of building relationships. You know, I taught for years under Loretta, who always said, "They don't care how much you know till they know how much you care," and I totally believe that. Two more things that we kind of have focused on as a leadership team is that building and repairing relationships are long-term investments. If a kid doesn't think that you value them as a person, they could care less what they score on a math assessment. If they don't think that you have any investment in them, you've lost them already. So we've really tried to focus on that, and that also is, goes down to the second one, is that no significant learning occurs without a significant relationship. So we've really worked on, there are some kids it's easy to build a relationship with. They have good social skills, you know, they come from an environment that social skills are modeled for them, but so many of our kids, especially here within the COVID gap that we've had the last few years, have really struggled with social and emotional skills. And a lot of those relationships, like Tony Garrett said, are really kind of built at school. So that's something that we take very seriously, and I do think that we have the data to show students who have made progress, not only based on the academic support, but on the relationship support that they have been surrounded with. From professional learning, that we continue to look at high-quality curriculum support, MPD, our continued work with the Co-op, especially with Kristi Stuber. This is our sixth year partnering with Kristi, and what she has brought to us from a literacy standpoint has been invaluable. And so we continue to have her come and visit and do PLCs with us. We're happy to say after this year that 100% of our classrooms are trained in CCI. We have several trained Level II, but all of them are trained Level I, and that totally changes the dynamic of a classroom when you have a classroom teacher led and trained in CCI, so that's made a huge difference. And Brooke and I also spend a lot of times in classrooms just taking notes of things that we can do to help support teachers, not evaluative in nature, but helpful in nature. I included the QR code there as I was limited to a page, so I was sneaky.
That's what I'm rooting out.
I'm sneaky, guys. But that's our three-year strategic plan, which Brooke squared, Brooke and Brooke really worked hard on. So I'd encourage you to take a look at that. And then I also included our current 30, 60, 90, which you all know, that's a very living and breathing document, that it changes every leadership meeting. So that's something, that's a snapshot from our last leadership meeting. So that's something, I'm sure, I feel like you all have access to that. But that is something where we try to document the work that we have going on, things that are not getting done, things that need to carry over, things that get done all the time. And to close, before I ask for questions, just some exciting news. We are very proud of our cheer team, who won in their division yesterday. They went up against two very difficult teams, two very talented teams, and came home with that region trophy, so we're proud of them. Also, something new that we have going on this year is our ESC news crew. They were featured on WKYT Morning News a couple weeks ago, and actually tomorrow, that team of five is visiting the news station, and they have developed a mentoring relationship with Victor Plumbow, so we're excited to see where that can take them. And it's really empowered these kids. I told them, I laid money on the fact I expected to see one of them bringing the news to me one of these days. And also, we are so excited at the work that our PTO is doing, and we're having our first carnival since pre-COVID next Friday night, so I would love to see you all there. You can eat some good chili. And speaking of chili, we had fried chicken today at school. I should have started with that, because I walked out in that lobby and smelled that oil, and I was like, "I've not smelled oil in the school in a long time." But Ms. Patty had, she fried chicken for those kids today, so it was a big day at Estill Springs. But I know I've given you a lot, I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have or address any concerns that you might have.
Would you care to explain what CCI is, very well?
Yes, that is our continuous classroom improvement. And that is, it's a very systematic method of identifying goals within a classroom, empowering students to take part in the ownership of that, to track their progress. And it sets, it sets not only individual goals, but it sets overall goals. They really build each other up in a positive way to reach those goals. And it changes as they meet goals and then move on, but it really changes the vocabulary in a classroom.
They take ownership.
They do take ownership, yes. It, one of my favorite things is to see a plus delta in a, one class, for example. I love Kim Plowman's plus deltas. They are so good and so honest and right out of the mouth of a first grader, but they can tell you what they need to do better on or what they did well on. So it's, it really is, you raise the ante and they'll rise to that. Yeah, you're welcome. Any other questions?
You're talking about building and repairing relationships, or long-term investments, by Stephen Covey, that's my uncle, by the way. I'm joking. I wish he was.
So say, I'd be asking him for money.
Absolutely. But I think that's so important, Jess, is just, you know, everybody in this room are, we're all beyond blessed. Our kids are beyond blessed. There's a lot of kids that don't grow up in the homes that we provide. And I think, you know, talking about, what's that little slogan about the caring?
Yeah.
I just think that speaks volumes. Kids just truly don't care sometimes until they know that you care.
Yeah.
And that's all they need.
Yeah.
Just that, you know, just that little bit of reassurance, and they can do amazing things.
And I also think it takes that little bit of reassurance for the parents.
Yeah.
Because they could care less what I say about their child academically if they don't think I don't love them.
That's true.
So we really try to focus on that, and I feel like, I feel like that's a strong suit for us and something that we want to continue to work on. It's one of those things, if you neglect it, it'll be, you'll have a harder time digging out that hole. So we're really trying to work hard with that. Anything else?
Well, I know last spring, when we made the decision to go with two K-5 schools, once the vote was made here, the work fell to these two principals and their staff, and they've done a fantastic job of, again, she just mentioned it, you're implementing a new reading and math curriculum at the same time. But we felt like that that's what we needed to do, and the trade-off on that was, we asked her, just teach the curriculum with fidelity, implement it with fidelity, do the other things like the monitoring and the grade-level PLCs and the tutoring, and try to do your MTSS block, do those things, but implement the core with fidelity, and then let's get through the school year, then we'll make adjustments. Because I'm telling you right now, there's no other way to make this happen, but it's implement with fidelity and a lot of hard work, because there is no magic bullet. You can't do anything that, "I can stick this in there and this is gonna solve it." I'm sorry, it's not gonna happen. We just need to get our teachers familiar with the curriculum. Then, when it comes back time during the summer, we'll worry about then, what do we need to change, what do we need to do to make this work better? But right now, we just need to keep implementing our programs with fidelity, trying to meet the needs of kids during, you know, I'm talking about core instruction, then outside of core instruction, trying to meet the need of our kids through MTSS during the school day and ESS after school.
Yes.
And they're doing that, and listen, I'd say there's been a little bit of weeping and gnashing of teeth among our teachers, because I know it's been hard work, and I know there's times, they probably enjoyed a little bit longer break, even though they had NTI last Monday and Tuesday. I'd say it was a help to them, from an emotional, just a well-being standpoint for them, because now I'm telling you guys, they're putting in, yeoman, the work that they're putting in in those two schools is unreal. I just can't brag on those two staffs enough. And I wish I could make it easier on them, but the only thing I can, just keep implementing with fidelity, work with the kids you know that need to work with, keep in intervention.
And I see a lot of promise coming from these programs. I mean, the teachers have said themselves, even though the work is hard, they wouldn't trade it. Just a discussion that we've had recently is, our fourth graders have science every day, and our fifth graders have social studies every day. And looking at the concepts that they're being introduced to through our Amplify in K-1, 2, 3, it's amazing what they're already being, what they're already seeing that's going to support that, even that science and that math, or science and the social studies. So it's exciting to see the foundation that these curriculums are laying for them, especially even in those content areas. So it's, I'm anxious to see how it all comes out.
Well, it's gonna pay off, the hard work's gonna pay off this spring, but it, you're gonna see, you're gonna see the fruits of this next year and the year after. That's when you'll start seeing the fruits. And I'll be around to continue to sort of hear what that is. I'll be very interested to see how it's done, and I'm thankful for you all, thanks.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thanks, lady.
Ms. Arvin, Brooke?
Ms. Arvin.
I didn't know, I was held to a large, so I'm sorry.
What?
No, I don't.
Oh, you bring a book?
A whole book.
Thank you.
Well, let's see, I didn't give Mr. Baylor one. I think that you're gonna hear a lot of the same things from me, so I'll try not to repeat too much, but some of them are just worth repeating. The first thing that you see on that packet is a list.
Well, you just didn't have QR codes.
No, I didn't have QR codes. I just gave the real thing.
You just, you just gave the real thing. It's the same stuff, just no QR.
Yeah, I just made the, made the hard copies. We kind of like hard copies every now and then. Can you come over? We might have, you know, you have to spell it in. What if I miss something good? The first thing I wanted to say is, it does take a team. Ms. Mullins talked a lot about that. We just can't make decisions at West if we do not come together and work on that and think about what it's gonna look like. So when you start this C-7 journey, there are lots of things you have to do. You have the data that we're gonna look at, but I want you to know that we also have stacks of things that the teachers filled out. I don't know if you all have ever looked at the Key Core Work Processes. I didn't bring a copy of that with me, but I will be happy to share one, because they're very beneficial. I wish I had these 30 years ago when I started teaching, because it really does help focus the work. And so the teachers look at the data, and then they start going through those Key Core Work Processes and start to try to figure out, what is it that we really need to work on? What can we do to make a difference? So that happens within these four teams. Everything that we do is broken down and focused on the four goals that the state gives us. The number of goals changed every now and then. We're to four goals this year. So we have four teams that will monitor, will request data, they keep up with the 30, 60, 90. So yes, we do have a leadership team that meets, but these goal teams meet, and then the leadership team will meet to think about the progress overall of the goals. So that's what that is, and I just wanted you to know that that's the process that we work through. So teachers completed the Key Core Work Process at the classroom level in their grade-level teams, then they came together in these goal teams and looked at the strategic-level Key Core Work Processes, so that we can narrow down our focus of what might benefit our school. The next document, I don't know how much you all, you all I know have been to, some of you have been to a fall conference, so maybe you've got more information than I've got. Ms. O'Brien was fantastic. She sat down, and her mother was not well, and sat down with us, and we really tried to work through our new color code. It was easy for me to aim for the stars, but now that we are aiming for colors, it's a little bit different. So on this side for the color code, you can see that there are overall scores for the elementary. So now we have these, not only are we looking at the, because I agree with Ms. Mullins, 100, 10%, you really only make things happen when you start talking about students and student needs. But we can do that by using these numbers to get to that. So this changes things. If you flip it over on the back, on the blue side, you can see how they break down our four goals somewhat. We do not have any English learner students currently at West, so we do not have anything in that area, but we do have our state results for reading and math. Then we have our separate academic indicator that includes science, social studies, and writing. And then at the bottom, we have the quality of school climate and safety. If you want to know where West scores, I ended up just making a cheat sheet online this way, but I tried to all, well, I didn't. I have to give Brooke. We've sat and tried to color code this for you all. So as far as colors go, so I know, I need you to know that we also took the Kentucky Summit of data that we got last spring, and we pulled out the students that are currently at West Urban. And so we have that data for our current fourth and fifth-grade students, because they took that assessment last year in third and fourth. So we teased that data out. You can start to see the colors on this sheet on the side that says West Urban C-7 data. We had 146 students that took that assessment last year that are currently in our building. We had 51 of those 146 students score in the proficient to distinguished range. That actually says proficient, but it was P and D together. That still put us in the low range, so we're orange. That still put us in the low range, so we're orange. I want to be blue. I think our entire school wants to be blue, but you can see that we are several color steps away in that. So, as far as the state systems go, we're down here in orange in both reading and math right now. We are very close to the green though. If you look at that cut score, it was 32 to 53. We scored a 49.7 in reading and we scored a 49, no, a 51, 51 in, 48.6 in math. Sorry, I have several numbers written down. Because I, no, I'm not going to jump to that yet. I'm going to stay focused. I could go ahead and move to the lab and back. What I do want you to know is we have really talked about the students. We too have gone through the data. We've looked at our CUSP kids and the CUT scores. The CUT, a lot of folks have asked, did, when the state moved to this color system, how did it really change? Unless Ms. O'Brien corrects me on this, we think the CUT scores for novice, apprentice, proficient, and distinguished are almost identical, if not identical. So, that didn't change. So, the CUT scores for the kids, we can still compare to math data. So, that's what we've been doing to try to see the trajectory from last spring to this year. We know that this year in our building right now, we have 230 students thanks to Mr. Norton and his work getting students back into our schools that might have gone to homeschool last year and things like that. We have more students in our building. And then, the KSA data did not account for our current third grade students because they haven't taken the test yet. So, we had to, that's what the blue number is at the top, to get to where we need to be with proficiency this year. We can't do it only by moving proficient students. We received a calculator from Ms. O'Brien that came from KDE. So, within that calculator, you can put your numbers of students in and manipulate them. There was no scenario at West where we could move the number of students that are proficient and get to the goal we needed to for reading and math. We also have to talk about the reduction of novice within that same proficiency goal. So, it's no longer just about moving apprentice to proficient. You have to include that novice number. So, that's why at the top, even though it's called a proficiency goal, you can see we have got to reduce the number of novice and increase the number of proficient, distinguished. We could also not find a scenario where we could do it without moving more students to distinguished. We have manipulated the numbers in that calculator numerous ways. But to get to where we need to be, we have to move proficient to distinguished as well as the other categories. And you see our numbers there for both reading and math. You have, so to get to that then, you have to know what our goals are. Now, it depends. Do you want me to go ahead and go through the data and then look at the CSIP? What will make sense to you? Want to look at the future next or just go on with the four sets of data? Look at the data, okay? So, we also have a goal that is required for us for the separate academic indicator. For that, I taught, our district team has been phenomenal in getting people in to help us and make sure that we understand the data. So, we sat with Ms. Susan Greer and talked about things. For the separate academic indicator, we needed to use the score that KDE gives us to set that goal. Now, we can turn that into terms of numbers and that's what I wanted to do for you all, by looking at the calculator. That's what you see by that, in that possible target column. We tried to put the numbers in that would get us to the green level, which is high. Couldn't get to the very high. I think that's going to take us, it will take us the three years to get there, for sure. But you can see what we would have to accomplish within science, knowing that that test is only taken by fourth grade students. We have a smaller number of students there than the 230. The social studies and combined writing are taken by the fifth grade students. And again, you'll see the number reflected there for that number of students. There were a couple different scenarios, but there is, you could get that down to almost no novice. But if you did, if you only move them to apprentice, you're not going to get where you need to be. You have to move them on up into proficient, distinguished to make those gains. We did aim high. We're swinging for the fence at West. So, you can see that we want to get to the green, but you can see the gap between those numbers. And again, this is, we didn't manipulate the KDE numbers for 2022 on that because I can never compare those kids again on this test. Ms. Napier will be able to look back at these scores in a few years and compare them in science to see if they may grow. But it'll always be a new set of students that take that assessment. The next set of data is about our gap goal. One of the gaps that we've talked about a lot in Estill County was, since I've been here, is closing that gap between students with disabilities. So, that's where we maintained our focus for this goal. So, in looking at the students with disabilities, we really need to decrease the number of novice there. We did stay in that range for this goal. In 2022, when we pulled out the data for the students that were left at West, there were less than 10 students in that set of data. So, I did not give you student numbers for that. But for 2023, we will have more than 10 students. So, you can see a possible target there of what we would have to do. Our students with disabilities, they just can't stay parked. To get to that 25% of the students, we need 13 or less scoring in both reading and math. That too is a lofty goal. We think we can do it. The quality of school climate and safety, that is the one that I am most proud of. Again, to reiterate what Ms. Mullins was saying, we worked a lot on that last year and our students from their own mouths in third, fourth, and fifth grade rated us in a high category. So, for students to say, yes, we think our school is safe. We think we have a climate where we can learn and grow in. I think that speaks louder than any social media platform we could possibly look at. That's our kids saying that about our school. So, we're extremely, extremely happy. More than anything there, I don't think I've ever, I have not had the privilege of having a goal I was even hoping to maintain. But even maintaining in the high category is pretty phenomenal. So, you can see there, we are swinging again for the fence. We want to move to that high, the very high category, which is four. So, from that data, I'm not going to have you flip to the back yet, but from that data, we move to the CSIP. The CSIP is the long page. I am going to tell you right now, I wanted to have this lately ready to submit. I didn't get to see the parents after we talked on Tuesday before Thanksgiving and I didn't catch up with them today, so they did, this is not in the parent signatures on it yet. Other than that, it is ready for submission. They've all looked at it and we've not made tweets to it since they looked at it. But from our data, then you see our goals. We really are, we too think that the programs that the district has purchased for us, the curriculum they have set, it's phenomenal. I think that our students are learning in both reading and math. One of the things that both of the programs do though is that it is a, they're both spiral kinds of programs. So, you get clumps of standards you're working on. So, the teachers really want to work on cleaning that up a little bit. Yes, implementing with fidelity, I agree with Mr. Saylor wholeheartedly. But we have got to get some focus for ourselves and the students. We know that when you're talking instructional strategies, that in itself is next to collective efficacy, the highest strategy you can have is that clarity. So, we want to work on just cleaning up the assessments with the learning targets that we have displayed in our classroom. And that is true for both reading and math. We, like Ms. Isaac, no, Ms. Isaacs, like Ms. Mullins, plan on using our classroom systems, the CCI, to help with that work because the students' voices really help clarify that. And it's not just the teachers. Do you all have any questions about that goal and what you see on our CSIP?
You'll get finalized copies of all the CSIPs at the December meeting when you approve the district improvement plan. You'll get a copy of all the finalized plans for the schools. Site-based councils approve those, you approve the district plan.
From the science and social, science, social studies, and writing, you'll see that we have broken that down. We felt like we needed to really go back into our master schedule and look at some things there to see how we could make use of every minute that we had to make sure students were getting that science, social studies, and writing. Our programs, both programs have a lot of writing in them and they are, it's really good. We do feel like our district worked really hard on a writing program in the past and our fifth grade teachers have been using that and actually did, you won't see it on the 30, 60, 90 that I copied for you, but it was on our, the one that's current right now. They did a, an on-demand practice and there were, there were, it's always stressful first time a student does that. It is. And we wish we could change it. It's one of those things you just kind of have to go through. But they realized that the writing plan that last year really complements the writing that's occurring in the two programs. So, we really want to get back to making sure we're doing that in each grade level. And then, again, working on the targets. The teachers found a program that they want to use for science and social studies that we'll purchase as a digital program or things that we've used in social studies before. But that way, they won't have to try to come up with things for that time. Any questions about that goal? All right. The next goal is the achievement gap goal. Through, please, no, I didn't say this, but the district team has met and I really feel like we have had some really strong conversations with all the principals in this room, thinking about what we could do. One of the things that we talked about to close that gap is to have more co-teaching in the classroom where if a student with disabilities needs those, their IEP implemented, hopefully, we can do more and more of that within the general classroom. Now, here is where we pulled our parents in. So, remember I mentioned that the teachers did these? What I didn't say to you was, last year when we did that, we, there were some things that bubbled at the top and I think, I thought, no, the parents are really going to connect with this. I wasn't sure that all of our parents were really going to be as interested in aligned targets and assessments as they were. So, we pulled in a small group of parents and then narrowed down what they were concerned about and then parents at our first conference came in and they voted. So, you're going to see some of that show up on this. They want to have more clarity about math, about how the data is used. They want to know more about what's going on in classrooms. So, just being more intentional with our learning nights. Even though the one we're having later this week is a lot of fun and it is focused on social, emotional learning, not the reading and math. The next is our climate and safety. Here is another place where you're going to see the parent input show up. They really want more input in the PBIS system. They want to know that their students are learning. I'm paraphrasing, but they really want to know their students are getting some insight into right and wrong and what that looks like and how to have empathy for others. So, you can see that we have some goals there. We use multiple programs. Ms. Wayne Scott goes in and provides counseling. But we also have the teachers that use Alveus, which is a bullying prevention program. That's our data, our goals and our data. I'm not going to go over the back, but just so you know, we are looking to the future. We are using our math data. We compared the CUT, the categories, the CUT scores, novice, apprentice, proficient, distinguished by KSA and math for the two grades that we have them. We'll be working with NWEA, the math company, in January on the second when we have our teacher work day to really kind of home in on those, on those CUSP students and make sure we're helping. No, but I don't want to say it that way. It's not just CUSP students. We want every student at West Urban to achieve their personal best. And then, the last thing that you have, I will not, I don't, didn't want to go over that with you, but I wanted you to go ahead and have a copy. The teachers met on Tuesday before Thanksgiving break during that NTI day, our teachers meeting. They went ahead and looked at their 30, 60, 90 for January and started writing down some steps of things they wanted to do. So, that's what you have in mind. Any questions?
Just checking. We're currently in winter math right now, aren't we? Are you ready to open the window?
Next week, yeah, yeah. We take that next week. Yeah, we were, that's very helpful because when we meet on the second, we'll have the fall data and the winter data. And she's really going to help us look at the trends for each child, you know, going through where you're going.
Maybe a real quick update during student presentations in the spring. It might not be bad to give us a comparison for fall and winter math data going into the spring. Be good.
I appreciate the time to share with you. Please come over anytime. Drive through the Christmas lights on Thursday. The things are helpful to you.
Any questions?
I think it's impressive that your kids think it's that safe, such a safe environment. I think it just speaks volumes about doing it.
And that they feel safe.
Yes. And that is a survey that they have to complete. It's not, it's not a quick, easy thing. But they have to complete it. We were, we were extremely proud of that.
All right, so.
Just so you know, I make a comment on these ladies. I just want to say I appreciate them so much. They are in classrooms. They are in command of what's going on, of each other's classroom. We've had to learn along with them and so, it's kind of interesting when we go and we walk through and talk about what we're seeing. One time we had to say, squirt your hands. So, we learned, but they have really been in their classrooms and I just, I'm very proud of all of them because they are in very much command of everything that's going on. And that's good though.
Yes, it is.
We've asked for a minimum of 40% and I would dare say that both our elevatories are past that. I mean, because of implementing this new curriculum, they're having to spend a lot of time. I just know that as a principal, if you are not in classrooms, if you are not doing, and it doesn't have to be evaluative, you're going there just to monitor what's being done. You're going there to give somebody a pat on the back, give them a suggestion. Teachers appreciate the fact that they know that you are interested in what they're doing and it just doesn't, you're not going to see growth. If you're not in classrooms, you're not going to see growth. You can talk about it all you want to, but until you're in classrooms, you're not going to see the growth that needs to happen in your school. Period.
And the teachers know they have that support. And that's a big factor.
And sometimes there's teachers, especially young teachers, they need to know, hey, I've got somebody here to support me. And then, if you do have somebody that may tend maybe not to live up to the standards you expect, if they know you're going to be there, they're going to live up to the standards. They're going to do it. So, I mean, I've said, the number one factor in high-performance schools is the principal and the leadership team within those schools. It's the number one factor because everything else can be solved as long as you've got a high-quality leadership team in those schools doing what needs to be done to make sure that kids are getting what they need, whether it's classroom instruction, whether it's social, emotional, whatever it may be, that they're getting what they need.
It's just amazing when you go in to hear the conversation and the level of vocabulary that they're using in a classroom. It is like not enough. It is like not enough. So, I'm just very proud of their work up in this world.
I want to visit soon.
You're welcome.
Just let me know when you have the chili.
I know, but you're going to have a coffee December.
That's your parents' drink for me.
I thought we was going to have to take a 15-minute break a minute. Got to go get some chili or chicken one.
I'm not kidding. Mickey just whispered to me.
If you stand up, they may wander out the door, so.
Just whispering, like, hey.
Oh, we're in good shape. Oh, we're in good shape.
That's how I get the kids down the car.
Ms. Nagier and Ms. Tucker are with us from the middle school.
So I'm one of those people, if it can be put on a spreadsheet, I'm your woman. So I just have one spreadsheet for you, but simplified.
Thank you.
So what you have in front of you there is just a summary of our ECMS 21-22 Kentucky Summit of Assessment, is what it is. And we're just going to take you through those scores and what those mean, and then I have put the states' mean as well, so you can kind of see where we compare to the state. And then, on the bottom there, the last chart, the last box, is just our areas of improvement that we have identified, our next steps and the strategies. We'll spend most of the time on that bottom half there. So if you take a look at the very top, we receive three scores, basically. Our overall score for our school, which was a 40.3, and then we all receive a rating, which for this year is a color. And our color is an orange, and that means the colors go, red is the bottom, then orange, then yellow, then green, then blue. And green and blue are the top schools. The average for the state of Kentucky was a yellow. So we are at an orange, which is one color below yellow. And then, for us, the middle school, we also received a federal classification, and that means that we were identified as a targeted school, a support for, a targeted school for improvement, and that was based on one demographic, which was our students with disabilities with an IEP. So what that means is, the state will offer us additional resources to come in and help, and we already have some of that scheduled, which I'll talk about here in just a minute. That means that our students with disabilities with an IEP scored at the same level as the bottom 5% in the state. So that doesn't mean that our whole school scored in the bottom 5% of the state. That just means that we had one demographic in our school that scored as low as the bottom 5% in the state. So we had a really positive meeting today, Mickey and I did, with some educational recovery leaders from the state, who's going to come and do a diagnostic review in January. We got dates for that. And that whole process in and of itself is going to just look at our school as a whole, systematic approaches that we have in place, and we'll offer some improvements in January. So we're actually, we're really looking forward to that. We met the team today, who's going to come in, and they seem like a really good crew who's going to do an in-depth look at it for us. So you'll see below there, just look at our ECMS all-grade scores right here. So you'll see the novice, apprentice, proficient, and distinguished percentages for each of those tests that our kids took. And then, if you look back up here, in the box that says indicators, you kind of see how all those scores are tallied. So they start with all of our reading, math, science, social studies, and the rest of them there, and then they combine those with the indicators. So the reading and the math scores is combined into a score. The science, social studies, and writing is combined into a score. And then, the quality of school climate and safety survey is combined into a score. So they combine those three indicators to come up with that overall score and the rating. So I don't know if you had, if you knew that, but to me, that was enlightening, and of course, I want to know, well, what does that 40.3 really mean? What does that orange really mean? And that kind of helped me pull it all together, once I started with individual tests that our kids took and saw what they scored. And then, as you go up the chart, it kind of just keeps adding, and it culminates into that overall score. So you can see there, just looking at the ECMS data, that across all contents, we had an extreme, well, a significantly high amount of novice. And we had a lot of discussion, and I want to tell you the truth, that really hit our staff hard. It really did. And it created a sense of urgency as soon as they saw those numbers. And I'll be glad to tell you, once we get to the bottom of this chart, all of the changes that have come about in our school ever since we saw these numbers. And I'll tell you right now, we have a staff who's focused, who has created a sense of urgency, and who have pulled up their bootstraps, so to speak, and gotten to work, and they'll continue to do so. So if you look at the charts to the right, I have kind of put that on a graph chart, so that if you just look at the ECMS colors there, the bar graph, and compare those to the state, you'll see that, yes, our numbers of novice are high. But if you look across the state, compare it to the state, that's pretty average for across the state. Now, are our numbers higher in novice category? Yes, and that's concerning, but we do have a plan to tackle the novice reduction. So I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time going through that data. If you have questions after, I will certainly answer them for you. I will say, you see the stars beside science. That means that that data is suppressed. That means that we had a small number of students take that test, and if I put the percentages on there, then those individual students are easily identifiable, and the state prohibits us from presenting that data in a public forum like this. But if you have questions about that, I'll gladly answer them. I can say that those numbers look very close to the social studies numbers. Okay? So let's go to the bottom. Okay, that's what Mickey and I and the staff have worked very hard on, and we continue to work on. We did identify some areas of improvement based on those numbers on those charts, and some other data as well that we've looked at, such as MAP. But the three biggest areas of improvement that we have identified, obviously, is the high number of novice in all content areas, the low percentage of proficiency, and proficiency is just, you take the number of proficient and the number of distinguished and combine those. And then, the bottom area, the third area that we have identified, is that gap between our special education students and the general education students. So we did see that, and the special ed numbers are also suppressed data, so I can't share those specific numbers, but I can give you some guidelines on how that looks, and those two notes in that box just help you understand what that means. So we do have a significantly lower percentage of proficiency among students with IEPs as compared to the general ed students. And we also have a high number of novice among students with disabilities with IEPs. So that's what put us in the TSI category. But now, let me tell you how we're going to attack that. Okay? So all three of these, you'll hear us throw around words like tier one, tier two, tier three. Tier one instruction is that whole group instruction, like when a teacher stands up teaching the whole group the same thing, maybe in different ways, but you teach them the same thing, that's a whole group instruction, that's tier one instruction. And usually, if you have, and I've taught this, I've been taught this for 20 years in my career, but usually, if you have a high number of novice, like we do, it is either a curriculum or an instructional issue. And so that's how we're attacking the problem, is as if it is a curriculum and instructional issue. So our next steps to improve each of those areas, you'll see tier one on there a lot. So that just means that we're going to work with teachers to really design and implement really good, strong tier one instruction. And for each one of those, it's going to look a little bit differently, but for one thing, for novice reduction, our teachers, especially our young teachers, we have 11 now out of 31 teachers who have three or less years of experience, and we have eight teachers who are currently in an MAT program. That means that they started teaching, but they have degrees in something other than education. And so whatever next steps that we put on here, we made sure to support that with strong professional learning, especially for our younger teachers and less experienced teachers. So they have asked specifically, they ask our school improvement team to develop, we kind of call it an instructional blueprint in our district meeting, and that's kind of what we've gone with, that's the name for it. But they, they would like a document that kind of says, you know, what does an Estill County classroom look like? What does it feel like? What does it sound like? And so our school improvement team is going to work on that for them, and Mickey and I will monitor it. And to support that with professional learning, we have some KDE improvement coaches. We just got a lot of information from them today through Ms. Isaacs, and we are going to support that work with improvement coaches from KDE, teaching them about the standards, because we feel like a lot of our younger teachers, you know, since they didn't go through an education program and get that understanding of the standards in their college years, we need to get that for them now. And a lot of them have surface-level understanding, or maybe even deeper understanding in those teachers who dove into it headfirst, but we're going to dig into that really good and make sure that they have really good clarity of those standards that they're teaching. And then, we're also going to look at the diagnostic review in January and take those results to heart and move forward with those. As far as the low percentage of proficiency goes, we had a really good district walkthrough right before Thanksgiving. And those of you who participated in that, I want to thank you again, because that information has gone a long way. We presented that to the staff actually twice. Once, we focused on all the positives immediately on that day, because it was such a positive experience, we didn't want to wait any longer. And I said, well, you know, I don't, I want to think about it for a while. Mickey's like, no, we got to tell them, because it was good. We got some good reviews. And so we shared the positivity with them on one day, and then we came back on the following Monday, and we shared the next steps. And then, we allowed teachers to give us feedback as well on more specific strategies that we could use in order to take that work further. So that work further, or that work from the district challenged us to increase the rigor of our assignments and activities. And so that's going to be one focus and one strategy we're going to use to push those kids into proficiency, who are maybe CUSP proficient or CUSP apprentice, and push them on into proficiency or higher into proficiency. We're going to use some differentiation strategies, because now, especially pre, post-COVID, we have students who are all over the place. You know, you have some students who are really low, you have some students who are really, you have some students who are high, and that gap got a lot bigger during COVID. So the way to remedy that with tier one instruction, when everybody's sitting in the same room, is to use differentiation strategies. So that is, that means you got to identify where Josh is compared to Victoria, compared to Tasha, and you have to have activities for each individual student, so that they are met, they're challenged where they are. We meet them where they are and push them to the next level. So we'll focus on some differentiation strategies to increase rigor in our classrooms for tier one. And our professional learning communities have grown tremendously, too. That's one thing we've changed since August, is we've revised that. They're more content-based now, and those PLCs will follow the PDSA process. We do feel like, especially our younger teachers, need a little bit more professional learning in that, so that's one way we're going to support them for tier one, or, excuse me, for proficiency. And then, lastly, of course, is our special ed gap that we identified to improve upon. Some things that we're going to do to help, especially our sped teachers, because two of them are brand spanking new, and we have three. We have one that's really experienced, and she's helped those two along about as far as she can. Amanda and her team have helped us tremendously as well. But we are really going to focus on helping them develop professionally and getting an understanding of the math and ELA standards themselves. And then, once they get that really good, strong understanding of their standards, we're going to get them some training on co-teaching strategies, which we partially do now. We do the best we can with, right now, with their experience level, but we're really going to push it forward this summer with some training from Southeast-South Central Cooperative, and get them some training on co-teaching. So that's kind of our next steps, some things that we've already done, I just listed them there at the bottom. So things that we've already done since August, so things that Mickey and I have kind of changed or added, that we feel like will just contribute to all of our areas of improvement there at the top. The first, and one of the first things we did, we changed the schedule, and I've talked to you about that before. That's one of the first things that I did as a principal, and no new principal ever wants to do that, but we saw a need for it, and we're really glad that we did it. We do have now in our schedule shorter classes, but our seventh and eighth graders have English and language arts twice a day, and they have math twice a day. Math is doing a really good job of using that second class as a true differentiated class, so based on what they're taught in the morning, in the afternoon, like I was telling you, how to divide activities with tier one, make it differentiated, we do that with our MAP. ELA's getting there. It's a little bit harder for ELA to do that, but granted, that PLC is getting on board, and they're making changes to make that second class differentiated for our students. We have implemented our writing plan. I know Ms. Williams has had that for me already when we got there, and I think that was a lot of district work, too. So we implemented our writing plan, and they write across the curriculum. And it's good quality prompts and extended responses and essays and all types of different writing for different purposes. So we have that going across the curriculum now. It should help that combined writing score and the on-demand score. We also, Mickey and I have done weekly admin classroom observations, and we're in the midst of the evaluation cycle right now. We just said back there, we're like, man, our teachers really feel evaluated right now. I said, and after Mr. Saylor told us how important it is to get in classrooms, we said, well, why don't we just get in classrooms tomorrow and not take an evaluation tool at all? Just go into classrooms and, and just to be in there with them, so that our teachers do feel supported, because this is a time of evaluation, and we feel like we've had really some good but challenging conversations with a lot of our teachers that have really been worthwhile and well-heard. We talked about how we revised the PLC process already. We do share weekly data with our teachers and our students, and we accumulate attendance, grades, and behavior, and we work that into a reward system that's motivating, and we have a really nice award assembly at the end of each nine weeks, based on that point system. So we feel like just communicating the importance of attendance and grades and behavior, and along with supporting those behaviors with our PBIS model is very helpful. And then, I told you already about the problem of practice that we identified and had the district come in and help us with that problem of practice. Comes to find out, once we mentioned the problem of practice, which was engagement, you know, teachers were reporting, that students were apathetic, and that's understandable, because we lost a lot of those really good instructional strategies during COVID, and now we're getting back to those instructional strategies. Kids are starting to talk to each other again, and they're starting to work in small groups and become more engaged, and that makes a huge difference. But they, the district did a really good job of helping us with that and helping us identify next steps, which is to increase the rigor and increase proficiency. That's all I have. Do you have any questions? I could talk and talk and talk all day on it, but I know you don't want me to, and I don't want to either, so I'll answer your questions if you have any.
Any questions?
We saw a lot of good instruction going on.
Good, thank you for that.
And student engagement.
Well, we're not, we're not here to make excuses. I mean, it is what it is.
Right.
But I will say that not only were you dealing with COVID in that particular building, but we went through a leadership change mid-year. We have probably somewhere in the neighborhood of 30% of our teachers were either first, second-year teachers, most of them with the MAT because of certification. We had a special ed teacher that promised us that they would be there for the entire year, left us in October, and we went all year long without a special ed teacher in that building. So notice that you saw special ed scores down. When you need three teachers, you only had two. There was no consistency, and of course, we know the tragedy that struck in the spring and, you know, and the effects that that can have, you know, losing a teacher in your building. So there was a lot of things, and not, throw on top of that, a couple of their teacher leaders left the building for different positions. So I think that's why it's important. The job you do is only as important as what you can leave behind, and I think that you need to make sure, when you have leadership teams and stuff, you need to be thinking about, if I'm not there, who can carry on this work? And that's why it's important that a principal chooses wisely who their leaders are and who's on that leadership team, because if something happens that, you know, Jessica had to be out for what she went through and her family. You know, it's important that you know you've got people left behind, it's going to carry on the work. You know, it's not the situation where the cat's away, the mice will play. You know, so I mean, there's a lot of factors that went into at the middle school, and quite honestly, I'll take a lot of the blame for that, probably is the district. I wish I'd been a little bit more looking out in the future and saying, hey, this is a situation that's going to require a little bit more help than maybe that we gave them. So I'll take a lot of blame for that, but I will take the fact that as a district now, as a leadership team at the district and then working with their leadership team, I think they've got a solid plan. And it's sort of a shame, I use this a lot, plowing the same ground. I hate plowing the same ground over and over and over, you know? And, you know, when we started this process seven years ago, we talked about novice redu- everything we talked about novice reduction. Guess what we're doing right now? We're working with KDE. They're back, we're not calling it novice reduction anymore, but we're working with key core work processes, which is novice reduction, by the way. Okay? with key core work processes, which is novice reduction by the way, okay? And we just needed to build the foundation. If we built the foundation seven years ago, we wouldn't be building it now. Hopefully we're realizing that and hopefully we've got young administrators, good administrators, realize, build the foundation to where if something happens when you leave, it's going to, it's going to be people step up and do what needs to happen and it's just, you know, but I will say that school has been through a lot, but they're going to get there because they do have a sense of urgency, I believe that.
And they're tough.
I appreciate that.
Tough and they're resilient.
Done a good job.
They have a culture too out there right now that they're eager for change. They want it to be great. And that's a difference maker, you know? They don't have to be told, they know and they're ready to make the change, so.
And in some cases, giving them the support that they need, you know? Again, not to go back, but even the old teacher internship program was better than what we have now, which is no teacher internship program, you know, trying to build that leadership, you know, trying to work with those new teachers to mentor them. There's a lot of things that go into that and, you know, it's through nobody's fault. I mean, there's a whole lot of circumstances that just piled in there. I think you'll see a big difference this spring. I'm not saying we're, I'm not saying we're going to jump to green. I'm not saying we're going to jump to yellow, but I do know right now, we're meeting the needs of kids better right now than we were. And I think that's because we're supporting teachers and doing what needs to be done. So I appreciate Ms. Tucker and Ms. Napier.
Ms. Napier, that day I met a teacher as I was leaving, she said, well, how bad was it? I said, it wasn't bad. I said, there's a lot of good positive and I said, Ms. Napier, we'll try to share them with you.
That's right. And you know, I told Mickey, we, just on the spur of the moment, we asked them to stay after school that day and we didn't make it mandatory because we wanted to share that. Every single person in that building was in that meeting because they wanted to hear that. They're just eager to hear the good along with the bad, but they're ready to work toward it, so.
And the teachers that are there, they, they knew what to do. I think Ms. Williams, they knew what to do. They just sort of lost focus a little bit, you know? They lost focus during last year because of all the changes.
Well, and-
I think, I'm sorry, Ms. Napier, go ahead.
I was just going to say in a difference now than to one, two, and even three years ago is that you have 25 or 30 kids in front of you every single day and there's no replacing that, especially when you're building the relationship and the culture. So I think that has a lot to do with our culture too, is that kids are actually in the building with their teachers.
Yeah, the consistency.
Well, and the teacher's not nailed on an X in front of the building either, you know, in front of the classroom, you know? Now you start to have more teacher interaction and just-
With our observations, we found that teacher, that students really like to come to school and that makes a big difference. When they want to come to school and they want to do that, it is the teacher has planned it and so that was a big plus for me.
We were almost at 92% attendance today too, so.
I know, I had, I was telling you today, I said, I hadn't seen Donald. That's my first question.
That's up from the 84 something when we left here Friday before last, so.
You know, you talk about excuses, not making excuses, but you know what, facts are facts. When you deal with adversity, it affects you. I don't care how it is, so.
I'll be accommodating at one place.
Exactly.
At one time.
Almost overwhelming.
And again, I'll be the first to say the buck stops with me, you know? So I mean, we, we know, we knew what we needed to do. I mean, we've reached out, KD, we're fortunate enough, we've got some pretty good connections at KD and we've got some people that's willing to come in and we got staff and we got administrators that's willing to listen. I hope we've got nobody making excuses. I mean, we, it is our as-is state, so we got to own our as-is state and then move forward. So thank you ladies for being here.
Donna, we used to have a program, no excuses.
That's right, we did. I was here for that. Well, now we're just getting smaller.
Mr. Young? Victoria, Tasha. And Ms. Victoria. Josh. Josh. Ms. Barnett, Ms. Halcom and Mr. Yost. Hey buddy. Everything going okay?
No.
Huh? It's not the shooting, it's the making, right?
I know. Oh, she's getting this.
Clicker.
Yeah. She can lick it.
Is that not it right there?
Is this it? No, it's the TV remote. We're doing good. We're only a few minutes behind, we didn't get started until about 10 after, so we're in good shape.
All right. Thank you all again for the opportunity to be here tonight. A lot of the themes that you've heard so far are going to be ones you hear again, but with a different lens, I think, because with the high school, you have five separate pieces of accountability that are in play. You have your proficiency with reading and math, you have your separate academic indicator, you have your climate and culture survey as well, but then you also add in the post-secondary readiness, which again, you look at the vision of Estill County High School, it's that all students will graduate college and career ready. That's a huge piece and it's, to me, it's the one I think that I take most to heart. And then of course, graduation rate. So we have five separate pieces that we look at. Celebrations from the data, for the class of 2022, over 70% of the graduates finished high school academic and/or career ready. The year before COVID hit and the year before I came onboard at the high school, that number was 46.3%. So even through COVID, our staff has worked extremely hard to increase that number by And it's only going to go up because of, again, the work the board's done and Mr. Sailor and the vision you all had, because we'll talk more about that in a little bit, but the Estill County ATC, this is the year we finally feel the impact of that because most of those industry certifications take two years to complete. This is the second year. So 52 out of our 129 seniors are enrolled in what's called a high demand career pathway. The way we're held accountable now has changed a little bit in terms of how you get your points. It used to be if somebody was college and career ready, you got bonus points for that. Now you get bonus points based on whether or not that student's enrolled in a high demand career pathway. And one of the big pieces of that was when the ATC was created, one of the grants we got was because they selected programs that were going to be considered high demand. So we're looking at those numbers going even higher next year. The ACT average during COVID dipped to 16 and a half, that rose a point, over a point last year to 17.6 and we're on track for even bigger growth this year. The juniors took the ACT back in, this year's juniors took it the first time in October and they raised their score half a point from the spring. So we've seen the progress of the efforts that are going on in our classrooms with that. For writing scores, ECHS was above the state average on both sections of the combined writing exam. And again, that's largely due, I think, to the hard work that was put in by Zach and the district team to implement the writing plan that we put in place across the high school. So both in editing and mechanics and in on-demand, we were ahead of the state average in both of those categories. And that's why, again, I think with the separate academic indicator, with social studies, science and writing, we were yellow in that category, which was above the state average. And our new English curriculum, this is something I've been excited to working with the English department on, working closely with Mr. Barnett and his team, they've created a lot of, or got a lot of new resources. And again, I want to thank the district team for the support they've given us on a lot of this stuff. They gave us $5,000 to purchase new resources for English and they purchased resources that are going to make reading and writing more accessible to our students by making it more relevant. They've purchased different resources by Appalachian authors. So the students aren't necessarily reading things that are from British authors or other, you know, highfalutin authors, I'll call them, but they're things that are more close to home, things that they're going to be able to relate to a lot better. And so far, our students have reported that they are seeing a lot more interest in their English classes because of those different resources that are being incorporated. So I just want to say, you know, thank you to the district team as well for the support they've shown for some of these new initiatives as well. This is just your overall KSA accountability. Again, numbers are numbers, but our overall score is 54.7. Our goal is to have nothing orange on that next year. We want to raise those scores and as we go through, we'll talk and I'm going to let Ms. Barnett and Ms. Halcom talk some tonight as well because we're a team and they play a critical role in these efforts that we're doing as well. But our goal is to have nothing on this say orange next year. We want yellows and greens. For the transition readiness indicator, we were seven tenths of a point away from yellow. For graduation indicator, we literally, if we were one tenth of a point higher, we would have been yellow. So we are extremely close in some of these really critical areas, such as graduation and transition readiness. The social studies, science and writing indicators, we already said, we were yellow in that area. And reading and writing, we know we've got growth to do in that area and we'll talk more about the steps we're taking with that here in just a minute. For you all in your presentation, I've got the actual pie charts with the data for you. I'm going to skip through those for tonight's purposes so that we can get to the next steps. But basically, as you're going through that, the themes you've heard all night, we've got to reduce novice scores. When we talked with our staff about that at the beginning, or not the beginning of the year, but we got the KSA data, I use the term, it's a moral imperative. We have to get students out of that novice range. We have to get them to where they are reading and doing math on a level where they are proficient. And that's something that our teachers take into heart this year and they've taken a lot of steps to begin moving students forward in those areas. And I think that's why you're seeing ACT scores come up. You're seeing students are improving and meeting academic readiness benchmarks. Again, with high school, you're hitting two different targets. You've got the KSA for sophomores and juniors, but then the ACT is a big thing the junior year. So we can take that data that our sophomores got in reading and writing last year and build on that, looking toward the ACT in March this year. So I'll go ahead and, all right. Our focus areas we've worked on so far this year, and then I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Halcom and Ms. Barnett. The first big thing is, we looked and we said, for us to get kids where they need to go, our assessments have to match the rigor of the standards and the assessments. So we've created a unit formative and summative assessment planner for teachers, they use in their PLCs, to track their formative and summatives along with the data of how those are aligning to their standards and their learning targets. Each department has been going through a process where they revise their assessments to reach the rigor, especially in terms of your inquiry standards for social studies and science, to hit those deeper levels of questioning on those assessments. Our counselors have worked exceptionally hard with Ms. Wade and our teachers. Our teachers had a much more significant role in scheduling this year than they've ever had. They took their students and they looked at, again, the teacher, or the principal so far have mentioned, looking at the individual student. Looking at those students and making sure that they are scheduled in classes that are going to help them meet academic readiness benchmarks. They're going to make sure they complete career and technical education pathways, both at Estill County High School, the ATC, and still a few students going to Madison. They've worked extremely hard developing English and math courses to meet the new graduation requirements. I'm especially proud of the collaboration between Ms. Bryant and Ms. Wilson, two of our teachers this year, and they are working, it's a money skills class where the students are getting math and family and consumer sciences. So it's meeting those students where they're at in terms of their ILPs, their individual learning plans. And of course, technical writing for 11th to 12th grade students, our students who are more inclined toward the ATC classes and the technical pathway, they take those technical writing classes. Again, working on increasing co-teaching intervention with core classes, that's something Ms. Napier mentioned, the hub visit to Pulaski County in the spring, we're doing the same thing so we can have our young special ed teachers be able to see a great example of how co-teaching can work really well. I want to thank Ms. Bryant, she's offered to come in and work along with Mr. Norton to do some co-teaching demonstrations for our teachers, because when I was at the middle school, assistant principal, Ms. Norton and Ms., Mr. Norton and Ms. Bryant did a phenomenal job co-teaching and saw that all the time when we were in their classroom. And Ms. Halcom has done a phenomenal job with the implementation of live school. Behavior referrals have decreased each month throughout this year as students are getting more and more acclimated to the expectations at the high school. So with that being said, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Halcom.
This summer, when I came aboard the team, we set out to really look at the school's culture and climate. How can we increase our school culture, making our students happy to be at school, our staff happy to be at school? Making sure that it's positive, it's inviting, and we're supporting everybody. So we sat down and we started looking at our school-wide implementation of PBIS and we knew that it had to be fixed. So we started out with our staying on track expectations and that's our teamwork, respect, accountable, character and kindness. And those are kind of our big ideas. And then what we did is we took those ideas and we set out clear expectations for common areas in the school. So our classrooms, our bus, hallway, cafeteria, restroom, places like that, so that students knew exactly what the expectation was for their behavior in all those common areas. Once we got that implemented, we took it to the teachers and they set out their classroom matrix. So every classroom in the high school has their own classroom matrix based upon teamwork, respect, accountable character and kindness. So for example, in a science room, you have the expectations for turning in bellwork, you have expectations for leaving the classroom, you have expectation for labs and et cetera. So after that, we wanted to make sure that we implemented this with fidelity, making sure every student was well aware of those expectations. Another thing that we've implemented is teacher and classified employees of the month and this has been a great experience for me because I get to see what teachers say about their peers. So in the month of September, Ruth Hughes and Shawna Plowman were nominated and in October, you had Jeff Brock and Brooklyn Moreland. And one of my biggest things that I wanted to do was get to know people in the community. I'm not from here, so I wanted to reach out. I also wanted to build that relationship with bringing people into our schools, getting that connection built back to the high school and the community. I have had family members and local businesses donate gifts to give to those faculty members. Upcoming, we were just talking to Mr. Cody this about kettle corn. This is something I'm looking forward to. It's an upcoming holiday week, it's a week-long celebration. You can't go back and tell nobody at the high school what's happening. It's a week-long celebration for our staff and our, and our students. So every day we have something planned, Monday through Friday, for not only our staff, but also our students. And we want to make sure that we just are showing them our appreciation for them coming to school every day and following those expectations. We care about them, we want them to know it. One of the biggest things with PBIS is making sure that we are holding students accountable, not only for the behavior, the not following expectations, but we're holding them accountable for following those expectations and giving those positive rewards to them. So we've got something planned each day for them and each day for staff. So I want to extend an invitation to board members and to central office to come out any day, Monday through Friday that week and you can help with giving those gifts to students, giving those gifts to staff. I'm looking forward to Friday, it's flapjacks and plantals. So our admin team is going to cook pancakes for everybody that morning for our staff. So if you all want to come out and help with that, that would be very nice of you and you are more than welcome to help with any of those events.
Well, I will have to ask, will that be in your weekly email so we don't forget?
I appreciate that.
I will send an email myself.
I'll tell them what's going on.
I'll email also. I'll make sure you all get it.
Thank you.
And one of the things that I really like about our live school program, and this was new to me, I had never used live school before, but I had completed a lot of research, I contacted a lot of people, I wanted to know what they were using to track student behavior. What type of reward system were they using in high school that was being successful? So live school is a way for our teachers and our staff to track student expectations and behavior. So if a student shows up tardy for class, they can go into live school, they can take a point for being tardy. Then they can make a comment, tardy to class, and every teacher can see that. Not only can teachers see that, students can see that on their app and parents can see that on their app. So it's an automatic communication between students, parents and teachers. You can see positives on there if a student is showing empathy towards another student. There's a button in there for empathy and you go in, you click empathy, it gives that student extra points, or in this case, it's called cash. But students then are now, we've implemented this, taking away points, adding points. What we're getting to now is students using those points, going into the live school rewards and using those points. So we have four different lunch ways. Sometimes students don't get to eat lunch with their friends. So I've had about four students now come up to me and say, I noticed in my school, I can use my points to sit and eat lunch with a friend. Well, as long as there's teachers are agreeing to it, we work that out. So they're getting that positive reward. Hey, I come to school every day, I'm doing exactly what I'm supposed to be doing. I want to eat lunch with my friend today. So they cash in their points and they get to eat lunch with a friend. So they cash in their points and they get to eat lunch with a friend. One of the things a lot of kids are saving up their points for is to be principal of the day. However, it is set up. I'm not a math person, but with the help of live school, they did help me set it up to where if a student never earned a point and they never lost a point, it would take them to the end of the school year, the last day, to be principal of the day. So they would really have to save up every single day. But kids are now starting to ask questions, or asking their teachers, or asking administration, how can I earn points? Hey, I lost three points today. How can I earn those points back? What can I do? So they're really starting to use live school, which is kind of was phase two, which was going to start in January, of really getting the kids to use it with fidelity. So they've kind of jumped the gun, but I'm tickled to death because sometimes it's hard to motivate high school kids. And if they want to eat lunch with their buddy because they've done what's expected of them, then let's go ahead and do that. Again, the communication part, it's instant. And then every Friday at five o'clock, every parent who has signed up on the live school app receives a notification. It's a snapshot of their behavior. So as a parent, I can go in and look and say, okay, my child lost three points on Monday. This is why. My child did really good on Thursday and earned four points. This is why. So it's kind of just a weekly snapshot in case you're like me and you miss a notification throughout the week. The school-wide rewards, so far, we've had two. We're given a school-wide PBIS reward every three weeks. The next one is a pep rally. I'm not going to tell this either, okay? But we have polled 100 kids at the high school, and we have Family Feud questions based upon Estill County High School, their likes, their dislikes. And we have asked 100 questions so that we can play faculty versus student Family Feud. And there's a Minute to Win It game. We are trying to build the school culture. We want kids to come to school every day excited, happy to be there, motivated to do better, okay? So one of the things that they said was, we don't have enough pep rallies. We don't do this enough. So I thought, oh, that's, we can do that. So we're going to play some PB, Minute to Win It games, my time's up. Minute to Win It games and really get staff and students involved all day.
Sorry, that was mine. It was time for me to put Carter to read his book and put him in. So sorry. I guess Drew's doing that tonight.
I don't think that group out there is structured.
Every time. Eight thirty? I used to make fun of my mom one time, and now it's me.
Another thing that I really enjoyed this year is our Staying on Track Student of the Week. So if you get the weekly email of me asking for nominations, I'm not going to apologize for that because I keep doing that. But every week, I send out an email asking teachers to nominate a student of the week. So every week, I will get probably anywhere from five to seven nominations from freshmen, sophomore, juniors, and seniors. And then we, I send that out in a form, a Google form. The teachers, they vote, and the teacher sends just a little short bio, basically, of why that kid should get student of the week, based upon the Staying on Track expectations. And then on Friday, we present them with a certificate and a snack. And the kids are now asking, hey, how do I get that? How do I get student of the week? So that's kind of interesting because before, they really didn't know what student of the week was. They didn't really ask about it. Now they want student of the week.
Hey, you want any, what kind of parent feedback can you got from your?
I have a lot of parents that will email or call and ask for live school because they want to know what's going on.
Okay.
So that has been a big help. And in January, I'm going to send out, again, the paper that has the code on it.
Yeah.
Because we have some parents that they're giving the paper out. So whenever Victoria sent home statements of concern the last time, we also put the live school paper in there.
I love that asset we're sending.
And now that kids are getting more, now that kids are getting more involved in this, and...
Y'all tell your kids, I burned the papers.
Y'all sending out through social media as well?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
We're waiting on Mr. Tanner to implement with the staff. Now I want to be prepared.
Due I want.
Now that the kids are realizing they're getting the rewards and stuff for it, and that it's, they are like, okay. And the parents, they're going home talking about it, so more parents are kind of getting involved.
Is this geared just for high school?
No. No, this is, middle schools are using it, high schools are using it. It's kind of reminds you of class dojo.
That's why I was like...
We've talked to Ms. Napier about it, and I think that they have, we've talked back and forth about them maybe even starting.
I like, I do like that, like, we have a work system, you know, that we, our teachers communicate with the students because of the fact that the kids have an app, that they have a status whatever.
And you will have kids come up and say, hey, I lost points for this, but can you explain to me why? So it starts those conversations.
And it allows the teachers to put in exactly what happened so they can put in a description of how five, their points were taken away. So it's working really well.
It's working well for us, too, to be able, if we have a discipline issue when we call that student behavior, people say, this is not just happening in this class, like, this is happening across the board. So where is it?
So if you have a, sorry.
Oh, no.
If you have a kid that's tardy four times a day, the four different classes, we can see that easily.
So it was really important when we first came in to kind of get our staff back on track with PBIS. And we rebooted all that and to get our culture built back up. But now we're getting into the instruction part, so we are going to start getting that hard. And we have been talking a lot with Ms. O'Brien and with Ms. Isaacs about this. So our first thing that we're going to start doing, and we're starting this in January, is implementing a monthly instructional strategy. And the administrative team is actually going to do this during our staff's monthly meetings. And through this, we are going to be able to model one, and we're going to show activities that will go along with it, and encourage those teachers to try those along the way. Hey, we're going to be walking, when we do our walkthroughs, we're going to ask to see those. And you can see, we've already looked at January, February, March, April. We took out May because today is when it gets all crazy anyway. And we have a plan set up of what we're going to do. So we're kind of getting, we have looked at these before, like similarities and differences, but our staff kind of needs to go back and look at them again and say, okay, let's revisit, let's get rebooted back in this, in this phase of looking at these strategies and then activities that go along with the strategies. So after that, we have also just talked about, with those instructional strategies, we wanted to go back to our PLC protocol and really focus on, because it's really hard, I was a science teacher, I was the only physics teacher in the building. So it's really hard to kind of talk physics when there's nobody else to talk physics with. So, yeah, Jeremy's back there waving his hand. When he was there with me, I got to talk physics with some people. But we were going to look at it, at looking at our instructional strategies and how those teachers are going to be implementing those in the classroom so that they can have those conversations among each other in the PLCs. So it's not necessarily going to be completely focused on the content, but more on how we're going to teach that content. So that is our goal of looking at the PLC protocol. We're going to work with Ms. O'Brien and Ms. Isaacs a lot on that to make sure that we have it exactly where we need to be. We are starting standard work, which is called Clarity for Learning. When we did walkthroughs, we realized that we needed to go back and do some standard work. So we are going to revisit our standards with professional development. We are going to be getting help with from Ms. Tanya Miller and being aligned, making sure that everything in our classroom is aligned to that rigor that they're asking for. Because like, they keep on telling us, our teachers know the content, we just need to make sure that we're teaching at the level that we need to teach it at. So we also are going to be going through this clarity for learning, and we are going to be going back and teaching our teachers. So I'm really excited about that and learning to go through these four modules. Modification of a walkthrough tool, this is something that we've already done. As we walk through classrooms, we wanted to be able to see areas that we really wanted to focus on and things that we thought were important and that we saw were lacking. So we wanted to make sure that our PBIS, like we were talking about, was getting focused on in our classrooms because we wanted to build that. We wanted to look at our learning targets and objectives and make sure that those were aligned and that the rigor was there we were. And that's where we realized that we are falling short in our classrooms, and we are going to be working on that. Instructional strategies and activities, I think that we have taken for granted that we know things and that not everybody is at the same level. So we are going to be building on making sure that those instructional strategies and activities that teachers have that toolkit to be able to use in our classrooms. Looking at questioning in their classroom, the student engagement, making sure that our students are actively involved in learning. And then, of course, our reading and writing implementation, even though our scores in our writing area were high, we want to still make sure that we are implementing that so that we keep that up. I am going to the Science Administrator Support Series, and I have been working with the Science Department on emphasis on those science and engineering practices. I wanted to put this in there because this is something that's important in the science area. So I'm going through multiple trainings on it. I've gone through my first one, and my next one's coming up. And I've already gone back to the Science Department, and instead of talking the physics and the chemistry and the biology, I was talking about, okay, here's something that you all can do as a whole, and look at those science and engineering practices. So I've kind of given them a challenge of saying, here's one little aspect, one science and engineering practice that I know that you are at this level, I want you all to, here's examples of how you could bump it to the next level, and then bump it to the next level. So I've actually shown them examples of it. And so now they're incorporating into their classrooms so that I can see the difference in that. And so I think that that's really important because that's something, like I said, that they can all talk about. And then, of course, we've talked about special education modifications and co-teaching. We realized that we have two brand-new special education teachers out of our core. And so we have been working, I know that we've talked to Maine DeBryant about, and Donald about getting in and showing that co-teaching, and making sure that our modifications, she's even offered to come in and help with our teachers to make sure that our modifications are meeting those students with IPs. Because when we were talking about novice, we needed to make sure that we reached those students and brought them up, so.
Just to close out real quick, I want to definitely thank these two ladies for the awesome work they have been doing this year. They've really brought a level of energy and hard work to this that's just tremendous. We talked about this back at the last Gear Up meeting. All sophomores and juniors took the ACT in October, and we have that data. Seniors who chose to take the ACT, the state funded for them to do that as well. Junior scores, again, were up from the spring assessment. Our CSIP goal for this year is 18.1, which will be the highest it's been since, I believe, 2015. It's an ambitious goal, but we're going to get there. Gear Up, one of the requirements for them paying for the ACT for sophomores and juniors was, in the spring, Torch Prep ACT prep will be coming to do a one-day seminar for the sophomores and a two-day blitz for the juniors prior to the ACT. That was one of the things Gear Up required for paying for the ACTs for those students. And again, I just want to mention again, the...
I just want to say, too, with that, they are, they have, this is not very, this is a very expensive program, the Torch Prep is. So we are very, very grateful that they have, we have wrote the special permission to be able to get this into our building. So they're coming in for that pep rally on a one-day and trying to get the kids motivated. And then the one-day seminar for the sophomores, and then the two-days for the blitz. And we're hoping that next year, we'll get that two-days blitz back for our juniors. And the important part about this is they are trying, it's more about a motivation on the ACT versus a teaching the content type aspect. So it's more about motivating and teaching test skills and stuff like that. So I'm really excited to hear about Torch Prep, and they have a lot of energy that they're bringing, and we hope that that will rub off on the, on the students and be able to, and make the ACT seem very important to them.
And as with any good, any good essay you write, you end with what you start with. Your conclusion circles back. All students need to graduate academic or career-ready. That's, that has to be our mission. It has to be what we want, every single student. We talked, back when we created the three-year strategic plan for the district, we talked about the end goal. And the end goal was for every senior to graduate Estill County Schools ready for what comes next. And the piece of that, I think, with the high-demand pathways, you're seeing students, I don't know if any of you all got to go, actually, I know I saw Ms. Sample and saw you there. But at the ATC open house, the students who were presenting there, it was phenomenal to hear those students talking about those things with a passion. They're students who may not necessarily want to go to college, but they're going to be ready to go on to a career. One of the greatest success stories we have from COVID was, we had a student, and I talked with Mr. Saylor about this, because I said, we need to try something new. It was a student who honestly, he wanted to come to school to get his math and English, but then he wanted to move on and do his career. He already had his welding certificate. So he left after second period after two classes and did a career work experience where he actually went and just like a co-op position, but he submitted his time sheet and everything. And he did welding, basically, from 10 to 6 every single day. That student graduated high school and is now making more than virtually any teacher in this district his first year out of high school. Because the passion that they had, and this is what we have to do for students, is we have to say, whatever comes next for you, whether it's college, whether it's military, whether it's going to technical school, whether it's working the trade, you've got to be able to go into that, and we've got to equip you to do that. So the scheduling piece with that, we've already seen with the English section of the students in the ACT and Coyote classes, 16 of those 21 students have already met both their reading and English benchmarks for this fall. The math students taking the Coyote next week. So we're looking forward to seeing the great things that are coming ahead. Our teachers are energized, our admin team's energized, and we are ready for the next steps to help move Estill County High School forward. Do you all have any questions for us?
And Gus, so you all know, and you may have some questions, but the expectations for a high school student has drastically changed in terms of what KDE expects for, out of a high school student. If you go back even to when I was principal, you didn't, you didn't have these same expectations. I mean, you could take a group of kids and be very successful, you could look like you was a really terrific high school, but when you start peeling back the layers of the onion, you'd start finding out there was a lot of kids graduating. They weren't career-ready, they weren't college-ready, they weren't even ready to catch the bus to go home the last day of school. I mean, so this is really a total different concept of what it really means when you really start talking about, is a student ready? So I tell you, it's a lot of work. It's, it's a change of mindset. It really is. It's a change of mindset for high school instructors, just because of, you know, the whole concept of, again, being ready. So a lot of work to do. I'm confident that they can continue to work to keep that moving forward, and we'll see how it goes.
Can you tell us a little bit about the Coyote?
Yes, the Coyote is actually, it's another measure the state allows students to take. It doesn't cost us anything, but it allows them to meet academic readiness benchmarks. So basically, with the Coyote, what it is, and there are colleges, we had a student that went to EKU this fall, who the, EKU accepted his Coyote score to be able to not have to take remedial math classes because he had met his academic readiness benchmark. So there are a lot of schools in Kentucky who do accept those. But basically, what it is, is we have them in those classes where they're working on those skills, and they can take that test. If they score within two points of the college benchmark, they can retake it within two weeks. If they are below two points away from it, they have to go through two-month intervention period, which they're getting in those classes before they can retake the test again. So we have the students with the ACT in March. Last year, we took those juniors who were close to benchmark, and we went ahead and Coyote tested them. And we had some of those students, I believe it was 12 of them, who met benchmarks after the ACT last spring with the junior class. So like I said, we're, we're setting an ambitious goal, and all of our goals are above what the state's tracking we need to go for. But our goal is to move north of 80% this year in terms of seniors graduating academic or career-ready. And I think we're well on pace to do that. I mean, I came to y'all last year and said we were going to hit over 100, and we hit 109. I'm looking at you right now and saying, I think 80% is well within reach this year, and I think we're going to get there.
Thank you.
Well, anything else? Appreciate you all very much. Thank you.
I appreciate the work Ms. Waite has out there.
Ms. Waite has done a phenomenal job.
She really has.
It's another one of those positions that are escher-funded, escher-funded that, as we move forward, trying to figure out how, from a budget standpoint, it's paid for for one more year. But...
Phenomenal job.
Mr. Austin, he's last on the docket and...
Y'all know I'm the eyeball, right?
Did you ride it out?
Well, actually, it's crooked. Jeremy with Chuck has been to the ATC. Jeremy with Chuck has been to the ATC. He says it's a paper issue, it's an understanding issue.
Let me, if you don't care, we're giving.
So he folds the right corner over and he pauses on the-
There's no words cut off, Elsie, that's all that matters.
Blame Jeremy. Well, that's why I referenced him, I wasn't going that far. Uh, so like I said, I'm the oddball, mine's a little different here. Talked with Mr. Sailor about exactly what he wanted to see and this is, uh, this is a little different than, than the rest of these schools. We serve a, a much smaller population, still very important. Uh, but the way that we treat these kids and the way we have the last couple of years, we're going to love on the kids that need to be loved on, we're going to be tough on the kids that need to be, uh, need some tough love. But we're starting to see it change a little bit. Um, during COVID, I think you had a lot of anxiety, I'd say Mr. Yost can, can attest to that. Uh, so we had a lot of kids that need to be loved on and, you know, that's, it's pretty easy to provide. Uh, we can move the bar pretty easily with them. Now what we have in our school is, especially with, in Success Academy and in person, is, uh, it's kind of a mixed bag, so it's a little bit tougher. Um, but what I've compiled here is our numbers through last school year and, and where we're at so far this school year. Uh, last year at the Success Academy, so in-person alternative education program, served a total of thirty-two, uh, students last year. And of course, if you don't know, um, what kind of student goes to Success Academy, well, it's a little different, especially nowadays. Uh, it's a variety of students, but typically we're going to try to, uh, help students get back on track academically or behaviorally. Uh, and it's, if you, those of you have been around this district for a while, the purpose, it seems like it's changed a little bit over the years and it goes back and forth. Well, then you sow COVID nineteen into it and it's changed a lot in two or three year, uh, span there. Um, so we're providing these services and supports for these students. It's funny, when we come and do these meetings, um, these principals of these other schools, they're all focused on building a graduate here in Estill County. And I've yet to make a reference, but it's fitting for the Success Academy because you start with Tony Garrett and we're building these tracks. Well, we're taking care of the ones that get off track and we're trying to get them back on. And what that looks like for each individual kid is completely different. Um, some of them, we don't get back on track. We just, we just don't. But, um, been excited, especially last year, I've got a, got a great staff of three and, uh, and, and Suzie carries a, a large leg of that. And, uh, so we had a great year last year with the number of students that we were able to graduate, ended up graduating twelve. Now that's, that's not all credit to Success Academy. Our students come from the high school and they'll go back to the high school. So you can't take credit for all twelve of those, but we had twelve students that were off track at some point, whether academically or behaviorally. We got them back on track, they walked across that stage and, uh, that was, that was a big number. I was really, really impressed with that. Now, not that, I don't want to take any credit away from high school or, or Ms. Napier, but, you know, we had a lot of kids that got off track due to COVID, remote learning. Uh, and so it was easy. Once we got them back in person, some of them were easy to catch back up. Uh, so graduated twelve last year. This year, we've, we've served a total of nineteen students so far in person. I give you a breakdown to show you success is changing yet again. Um, you know, right now currently we've, we've hit eight freshmen, four sophomores, seven juniors and two seniors. A lot of times at success, you see upperclassmen and now there's, there's already been a shift. Now, these freshmen, some of these freshmen are first year freshmen, some of them are second year freshmen. But, uh, me and Mr. Yost work pretty closely together and when a student gets off track, especially if they get off track early, um, you know, we, we try to get them back on at the Success Academy, used to, past couple of years, if a freshman got off track, uh, we're so busy serving upperclassmen that sometimes they kind of had to dig through it a little bit at the high school before maybe having this opportunity. And that's the way we look at this. Uh, a student comes to Success Academy, it's an opportunity for you, it really is. Because, um, we can accelerate learning, we can accelerate, uh, the, this credit recovery process in ways that, that the high school can't. Um, but we have currently, like I said, we have seven juniors, two seniors, and we have six students that are currently on track to graduate in the spring of twenty twenty-three. Um, some of them could fall off by then, but we're hoping to graduate six this year of, of the ones that we've currently got to work with. Uh, another big celebration to talk about, we've got a partnership with, uh, Ms., Mrs. Combs at the ATC. And we're going to have some of our Success Academy students enrolled in her ATC, ATC courses, uh, here in the spring and, and try to get some career readiness out of them. She's excited to work with them, we're excited that, that she's willing to have them and can't wait to see what that's like. It, um, again, staff of three, a room and a half is what we're looking at. It's nice to get them out of there. Um, and let them experience something a little different. So aside from the Success Academy, we also, Donald, I don't know how far you want me to go into talking about performance based, but it's, it's another way of getting back on track, we'll just put it that way. And the type of student that we serve with our performance based program looks a lot different than, than the ones in success. A lot of times maybe they've, they've slipped through the crack and we've missed them entirely, or they have other circumstances and, and this is kind of a last ditch effort. Uh, population, uh, student population is not near as high, but last year we served a total of eight. Uh, students can be placed there either by the DPP or a lot of times, uh, the counselors at Estill County High School, Mr. Yost, they'll, they'll suggest kids for the performance based track. And success varies and with this, it's all on the student. It really is. We're there to provide support, but whether or not they're successful is entirely up to them. But we give them the avenue and the opportunity, uh, should they choose to go that route. And last year, I said we served a total of eight, five of them graduated. Uh, two of those had a teacher at the Estill County High School that worked closely with two of these students that really got them to the finish line, but we're very pleased with graduating five of them. So far this year, currently serving eight students as well, four of them are on track for graduation. Uh, Mr. Norton can tell you with performance based, you don't necessarily count on graduating all four of them because they're easier to get off track than, than the in-person success students. Lastly, something that's new that you all had approved and want to report on, uh, the virtual academy. So last year we served a total of twenty-nine students, uh, K through twelve. We didn't have any kindergartners last year, don't have any this year either. Um, but the process for getting into the virtual academy is a little bit different, applications are open right now, anybody watching wants your kids in the virtual academy. This one's a little more, it's a little tougher to get into the virtual academy program. There's a lot of requirements that the district has set that they must meet to get in. Um, but had a successful year with it. Last year, uh, we graduated one senior, we only had one senior enrolled last year. And, and looking at this year, you know, it's, it's grown a little bit. You're looking at twenty-six students currently enrolled in the virtual academy. Two of them on, on track for graduation this spring. Jeremy, you can scroll down to the very bottom and I'll show you, there's a breakdown grade wise, they're, they're kind of scattered. So we, uh, we run a virtual program for K five students and then we run a program for six through twelve. And last year, your high school, middle school population was a little bit bigger and, and this year it's roughly the same.
If I'm correct, they can, they can only come and go at the semester.
Yeah.
They, anybody that's virtual right now can come back full time in January or their, the application process is open right now for new students. Uh, students live in the Estill County, there are some guidelines in terms of, uh, admittance. Uh, but now we can take virtual students from across the entire state. Uh, it just, it's not limited just to Estill County, it can be anywhere in the state, can attend our virtual academy if they decide to do so.
They can come and go voluntarily at the semester. Uh, we can, we can choose to move a kid whenever we see fit. Uh, luckily-
If they're not doing what they need to do.
We've not had that yet.
We, we have the capacity that we could take on a few more students based on our current staff. It's all dependent upon, we've got, I think, Ms. Arthur, right now deals with our virtual academy and, um, I think there probably is a breaking point, twenty-six is not it, but I would think that probably if we start getting in the mid to upper thirties, we're getting probably to the point that it's-
It's beyond.
It's getting beyond where we can. So that's why we're very, we, we want kids in person, if we can get them in person. But we do have some students that have family situations that, uh, you got a, a real elderly grandparent that lives in the home that's compromised. Uh, they're, they're afraid, they don't want to do anything that might, uh, imp-
And you have a lot of that too. Tell you from these interviews, you, you still have a lot of that.
Tell you the other thing that I, I really think that we have worked to change and, uh, I, I've been a bear on this. I don't believe the Success Academy is for behavior intervention. Uh, it is not for behavior students. I mean, there's times that, you know, you might need to remove that student. You know, most of the time when we've had students that's, uh, committed offenses that would amount to be a felony, we serve most of, most of those students through virtual programming. Uh, we don't allow them in school, but Success Academy, uh, is not a place to dump behavior kids. It's just not. And the thing we have to remember, these students are our students, they're accountable to our schools. So we have to make sure that we're meeting the needs of these kids. Doesn't mean that a kid might not, you know, might need to go to Success Academy for a few weeks just for a reboot. It's what I appreciate Austin about, he just has that temperament, you know, he, uh, I'll brag on him a little bit, not that I wouldn't brag on the rest of you a little bit, but now he has the right temperament for that program. You know, he just does, he's, you know, he has that mild manner, he can be tough, but you know, I think he has kids that, uh, they respect him for who he is. And I think that's very important. You got to have that right person there that can see the results that they are. And of course, that benefits the high school. When these students are graduating, these are kids that were dropouts before. You're not going to see ninety-one percent graduation rates, you know, based under the old model where you kick a kid out, send them to Success Academy, go down there and it just becomes a zoom and the next thing you know, they're dropped out of school. So the whole idea is get them there, get them back on track, get them back in school. And if we don't get them back in school, then that's when we start considering ourselves a failure, not getting them back on track.
That's the tough part, they, they've got to experience some success or they, they still turn out to be dropouts. Got to get them some success.
The students loved it when they found out Mr. Murphy was going to be a sub, it was like, yay. And I talked with his mom myself.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just had a couple of comments and wasn't nothing exactly driven toward Austin, but, um, I rolled my eyes at Ms. Howcome and Ms. Barnett while I go, because I feel like it's time to make the donuts guy about the kettle corn, that's why I wrote. We've made so much of it, I'm sick of kettle corn, so.
Some help you make it.
Okay.
Hey, there's, there's two people next door, just, they're, they're fools, you can sign them up to, to, anytime.
Uh, the other thing is, um, uh, what they're doing at the high school to get kids to come to school. Um, you know, we talk about let the beatings begin at my house and if that gets COVID to school, I'm all about, let her be principal for a day. Um, but the other thing that I just keep hearing is from Tony Garrett to Charlotte, to Jessica, to Ms. Napier, to Mr., uh, Mr. Yost and to Austin. Everything that I've heard throughout this whole thing has been passionate about students, engagement, um, and loving them. I mean, I think that's, that's more key to it than anything. Um, you can love them with expectations. Uh, I played football for Hoover Nice, he loved me unconditionally, but he put my feet to the fire too. And he expected me to do what he, I was supposed to do. So I mean, I think that's, that's such a key to, for kids to know that you care about them and, but at the same time, you hold them to a standard, you know? That's just like us in life every day. I mean, we're all held to a standard. Um, you know, I think about this is where I work, we make pants. I'm glad you got pants on. But, uh-
Me too.
You know, it seems very insignificant whenever we're making pants, it's so important to this community. But whenever you all are doing the things you're doing that are literally changing lives, I just think that's so amazing.
And I'll say this, Ms. Combs was so excited to have the Success Academy students coming to the ACC. She and I talked about this, you know, at the open house, the president's doing the presentation, she was so excited.
But the, yeah, but the engagement, loving them, and I heard Austin say this three different times, is we served. We served these kids, you know, I mean, that's what we're doing. I mean, that's, anybody as a leader, if you're drive, practicing servant leadership, you're going to, you're going to reap the benefits. I believe that wholeheartedly, so.
There's a lot of good things going on. You need to give yourself a pat on the back.
I know everybody wants to talk about that football stadium, they want to talk about that new gym and everything. I can tell you, the most prideful I am of any thing is that area technology center. That area technology center will change the lives of kids in Estill County for years to come. And it's been much needed for a long time and, uh, yeah, I, I love the new football field, I'm an athletic sky, but I also know that athletics doesn't pay the bills for our kids. There's, uh, I don't know, we may have had one or two professional athletes in Estill County in all the years. If you go back, you know, maybe some, somebody that's golfed or something like that, that's done something along that line. But we don't have, we don't have a slew of pro football players or baseball or, you know, it's, it's about college and career readiness, it's about, think about the lawyers, the doctors, the, you know, the school teachers, the welders, the, the mechanics, the people that's been through our programs, that they're making a good, honest living. And that's what it's about. And that area technology center, that's, what was that?
It gives them a head start.
It gives them a head start and I'm telling you, that area technology center is a life changer and that, out of all the facility projects, that's, that's, that's my number one. I, I like that area technology center, I think it is.
Ms. Combs is so excited about everything she's doing up there for those children. I call them children, they're not young adults, but that's beside the point.
They're children, yes.
They're still children to us.
I just think it's such a success, I mean, not to, not to brag on my kid, but her and a lot of other kids within the first year got to go do the skills thing. I mean, kids would have never experienced that before. Never would have even had the chance to even consider doing something like that.
And for a first year program, that's pretty remarkable this year.
Oh, yeah.
And as, uh, Mr. Yost spoke about a minute ago, hey, you're going to start seeing the benefits of that thing here in its second year when these kids are completing two-year programs. Uh, so you're going to start seeing the benefits of that. So, um, there's a lot of good things going on in Estill County. Um, I, I'm very appreciative, I appreciate the board, I appreciate the support of pass boards. Uh, we wouldn't be sitting here. You know, we got a student representative here that, uh, that's at the high school. I started to have her a minute ago, I don't know if she had any comments about, uh, high school and just her thoughts and don't worry, they can't punish you if you say it. I, I give her a free pass to say whatever she wants to say.
They might add some points.
Oh, I'd love that. I mean, Mr. Yost and Ms. Barnett, Ms. Howcome, they do wonderful things. And the support they've given us, I mean, being a class officer and everything and being on student council and FFA, they support every program out at that high school. And I'm just very grateful for everything they've done for us this year. It means a lot. I mean, COVID really affected us. We want to move past it, but, I mean, I loved school and being outside of school for two years really affected me. But getting back into it and getting involved, that's what I really enjoy. And I love being here with you all and being a part of everything and that truly have impacted me and many other students. So.
And this lady's been, this young lady's been a very sick young lady, to say the least.
I think that's a good ending point. Mr. Yost, if you're ready to adjourn?
I'm ready. I think everybody's starving. Y'all ready to adjourn? See your samples, make some motion.